We'll call the meeting to order and good morning.
Good morning.
Peter, this is your welcoming committee. We have this group every council meeting. So, welcome to Corpus Christi. We'll get the meeting started. I'd like to call on Deacon Michael Mance of the Diocese of Corpus Christi to lead us in the invocation, and then Margaret Marin with the Utility Business Office will lead us in the pledge to the United States and Texas flag.
Bow your heads and pray for God's blessing. Almighty and ever-living God, we give you thanks for the many blessings in our lives, for our families, for our friends, and for our ability to live and worship in a free country. We ask that you bless the members of this city council, give them wisdom and courage to make honest and just decisions for all of the people of the city of Corpus Christi, and we ask this in your name, amen.
Good morning. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you very much. Paul Pierce is going to be calling the roll. Ms. Huerta is off at a conference, and you wouldn't mind calling the roll, Lee?
Mayor Joe McComb.
Present.
Councilmembers Roland Barrera.
Here.
Rudy Garza.
Here.
Paulette Juahardo.
Present.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Ben Molina.
Present.
Everett Roy.
Present.
Greg Smith.
Here.
City manager Peter Zanoni.
City attorney Miles Rizley.
Here.
Mayor and council acquorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Well, this is a different day. Elizabeth, you can sit down there for a second. We're not gonna, we don't need you right at this moment. What I'd like to do first on behalf of the city council and the city of Corpus Christi is welcome our new city manager, Peter Zanoni, and ask him to come say a few words. Let me, the council went through an exhaustive search, and we found the individual that we felt like was the one to lead us in the next few years, hopefully many years. And it was, we had several highly qualified candidates, but Peter rose to the top as we discussed and looked forward in what we wanted to accomplish over the next few years and his experience, and he just seemed to fit what we were looking for, and council came with a unanimous vote to bring him all the way down here from San Antonio. And so, based on his track record up there, we were very pleased that he accepted. And today is his first council meeting, but it's not his first day in the city. He came down actually prior to even the search committee to kind of find out about what was going on in Corpus Christi, and then came down, I think, last week some, and visited around with a lot of people, talked to a lot of people, met with a lot of folks, and then I would run into him at HEB or Walmart or wherever I was, and they said, hey, we were a group and your new city manager came and spoke to us, and he said, we're pretty impressed with him. And I said, well, the council was too. That's why we hired him. And so, I'd like for you to make a comment. I will say that I did get, and I'm not sure that I was intended to, but I got a copy of a letter that he sent out to the city employees yesterday introducing himself, and I was quite impressed with that, and I hope the city employees feel his heart and his commitment to doing the best that he can for the city of Corpus Christi. And I think on behalf of the council, we're welcome you here today. Ask you to make a few comments before we get into the nitty-gritty of city business.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome to Corpus Christi.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity just to say a few words. I know, I know you all know a lot about me, but the viewing audience, be a good chance for them to just to get to know who their city manager is. So, I am Peter Zanoni, and I was born and raised in the state of Maine, but as you mentioned, Mayor, I spent the last two, last 22 years just up the road in San Antonio, Texas. So, while I'm not a Texan by birth, I feel I'm a Texan by time, and this is a great state, and Corpus Christi is a great city, and training in San Antonio in this profession of city management has made me ready to be a next city manager. I'm excited about being here today. One of the things I didn't anticipate through the process was the overwhelming support from the community and the genuine outreach and hugs and handshakes. They are excited about making some positive momentum forward. I'm glad I can, I'm glad I can help them do that as their next city manager. Yesterday, the first thing I did was met with our top 50 executives. We have directors and assistant directors and our assistant city managers, and I met with them because as I've been out in the community and as I've worked with you, we have a lot of ideas for vision, visioning and how we can improve Corpus Christi, but I can't do it alone. Even though I'm well-trained, I need that top 50 executives to help do that. So, yesterday, I met with them to make sure they understood my expectations and the community's expectations, and also gave them a chance just to kind of know a little bit about myself. They asked if I had any pets, as an example, and that type of thing. But what I told them, I want to repeat to you today, which was that I'm here for the long haul. This is not a two-year stint. As long as the mayor and council will have me, I know I'm going to have to perform to have you keep me here, but this is a long-term commitment. This city is going under tremendous growth, and having a city manager that's committed to the long-term is what we need, and I'm giving you that commitment for me, and I'm telling the community that as well. This is a multiple year, I've used five to 15-year commitment, and I'm committed to doing that. I've heard a lot about the growth that's happening here, and I think the best number I got was from the port of Corpus Christi, where there's $50 billion, five zero billion, of investment that's underway in this city. That's tremendous, right? Many cities won't even see that in a lifetime, and so, we have to think big. We have to think, as I said in my interview, big-city mentality. I'm going to help you do that as your city manager that's been trained in the eighth-largest city in the country. What I told the executives yesterday is I need their help to deliver on the vision that you have asked me to deliver on and that the community has asked me to deliver on, and that is having Corpus Christi a strong quality of life. We know we have one today, but we know it can be stronger. We want this to be a great place to live, to work, and to raise your family. My family will be here soon, and so, it's somewhat of a selfish motive to want Corpus Christi to be a great place to raise your family, but we want that for all, all of our families here in Corpus Christi. I've heard many a time in San Antonio from people that used to live here, that, you know, I graduated from high school here, and then I went to college somewhere, and I didn't return back to Corpus Christi. We want that to change. We want people to be able to go to school here, go to college here, and stay here. This is a great city. There's no reason people should leave. What I told staff yesterday, in fact, I don't know if Keith Selman's still here, there he is. What we did yesterday, though, before I talked too much, is we did want to spend a few moments, I told the staff this yesterday, I think it's appropriate to do it here as well, to thank Keith Selman, who has been holding the, holding the fort down for the past 12 months, a little longer than I think what he thought when he said yes, but let's give Keith a round of applause for-
Yeah, thank you, Keith. He's done a great job, and he'll be instrumental in the transition period. What I talked to staff about, though, is we need to be focused more on professionalism. We want to build a highly professional, highly competent staff here in the city. We want to be customer service-oriented, especially in the development services area with our development community. We want to impact that quality of life that I talked to us about. One of the key things that they'll tell you about me, and you may have heard, is that I know how to get things done, but it's with a sense of urgency as well. And so, we as staff are going to work with a sense of urgency. There's a lot to do, and we're going to get things done. We need leadership at all levels. That's what I told my executive team yesterday, to remind them that not only do they have to be leaders, but the staff below them at all levels need to be leaders at all levels to get, to get done what we need to get done. And we need to look at some best practice examples out there. There's a lot of, even though cities have been around for hundreds of years, there's always new things being created, but there's a lot of great best press, best practices examples out there. And so, we need to kind of borrow and steal from some of those cities that are doing things already and do them here the best way that we can. I told the staff yesterday, and I'll tell you today, that we need to focus on diversity at all levels in our hiring practices and our teams that we build, not only in who we hire, but as we set interview committees up to interview contractors that want to work for the city. We need to make sure those interview panels are diverse as well. So, a focus on diversity is critical. And we talked a little bit about this in the interview process of youth engagement. We want to engage those youth. It's a little too late for this year, but next summer, we'll have a program where we have high school students in each one of our departments, two or three in some of the larger departments, getting youth engaged in our city government and helping us and helping them be future employees of the city. So, youth engagement is critical. I, let me just talk a little bit about, I know the media's been asking, and you all have been asking, what they say, what's the first thing you're going to do as city manager? And actually, last week was some of the first things I did even before I started, and I appreciate many of you that took me out for lunch. We got a chance to talk, and, but some of the first things I'm going to do is what I mentioned already is building that strong organizational team. I'm here to help out, and I'm going to be the leader, and I'm going to lead, but I need my team behind me to really make a big difference. So, building that strong team is one of my first things I'm focusing on. I've heard already, last Thursday, Councilman Hernandez and I met with the development community. They want some change in that development services process. We need to be more enabling. We need to have better focus on customer service, timeliness, as well as consistency in the application of the codes. And so, we're going to look at how we can do that. Another priority is our streets and our bond program delivery, making sure things are delivered on time and with quality. Water security, I've already said, that's very critical. I'm going to meet with our water folks starting at least twice a week to make sure we're in good shape there. And our parks and recreation is another area that the community is really asking for some improvements in that for them, for them and their families. There's some things that are underway already in the calendar that I'll be engaged in to include our police collective bargaining. We want to have a good, a good, a good faith session there to deliver for one of our most important aspects of government, which is public safety. And our, our budget process is underway. I don't know if our budget director's here this morning, but that's an important part for any city manager, and I was San Antonio's budget director for six years, so I'll be engaged in the budget development process here in the next couple of days and weeks. And we're going to talk a little bit about this this morning, Peter Collins', but we got to focus on that, on those water bills where people are in arrears, delinquent accounts. That's going to be a focal area of mine, to make sure we're doing the best communication outreach we can do, make sure we can put these families on pay plans so that nobody's water is disconnected. And then we know the landfill operations is something we're going to look at here over the next couple of days and weeks. It was on the city council last week. So, mayor and council and the community, those are a little bit about myself and some of my expectations for our organization and some of the immediate things. The list of things to do is much longer than what I'm talking about this morning, we know, but those are just some of the top things. And in closing, I want to thank you, mayor and council, for having confidence in me, but wanting the best for the city as well. I know your process to find the next city manager was extensive, and the staff did a fantastic job. In fact, you all were extensively involved, and so, I want to thank you and thank the community as well, though. They have been really a great and unexpected. I can see the commitment that they have for their city, and they want a city manager that's going to help deliver many of the dreams and aspirations that they have for themselves and their families. So, thank them, and thank you. Well, thank you. So, welcome aboard. I think you see why the council feels like we made the right decision. All right, we'll go to, we got proclamations, and we'll start with that, and every council member, I think, has been assigned to one or so. So, all right, we'll start with the Emergency Medical Services Week. and not in their professional capacities. So, you just, you want to celebrate them, and hopefully they're not having to work while they're seeing you in some extent. So, I'd like to ask Councilman Juahardo to help us with the proclamation. Huh? Did I say man? Oh, excuse me, council person. Council person, excuse me there. I told her, be careful, don't trip. We'll have a medical emergency right here. If you twist an ankle coming down the steps over there.
Geez me. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. The Emergency Medical Services, or EMS, provided by the Corpus Christi Fire Department, is a vital public service, as we all know. The members of the EMS team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. EMS has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. EMS teams consist of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency physicians and nurses, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. Members of EMS teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance, to enhance their lifestyle or their lifesaving skills.
Now, therefore pursuant to the powers vested in me as the mayor of the city of Corpus Christi, I do hereby proclaim mayor, May the 19th through the 25th, 2019, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Corpus Christi, and encourage all citizens to recognize the value and the accomplishments of our emergency medical service providers. So, let's give them a hand in chief. Are you going to be-
Thank you, Mayor, and on behalf of the fire department, it's an honor to receive the proclamation from you and the city council with regards to when it comes to EMS Week. Want to let the public know that out of the 52,000 calls that the fire department went on last year, 40,000 of them were medical, and every person you see up here is either a paramedic or an EMT and can, and can deliver top-notch medical care. Also with us today are some of our partners from the hospitals, and at this time, I'd like to introduce Billy Bellew, who is a battalion chief currently in charge of EMS, but shortly will be in another position later on down the road.
Thank you, Chief. So, the theme of this year, I mean, yeah, for this year for EMS Week is beyond the call. So, responding to calls and performing lifesaving skills is just part of the job, as we always say. But the brothers and sisters of EMS in the great city of Corpus Christi go above and beyond the call on and off duty. The true reach of EMS truly goes beyond the call. So, take, take this week to thank the members of the EMS community for not only responding to your calls for help during your worst day, but thank them for also volunteering for humanitarian efforts in the community. Let's give these men and women a round of applause again. Thank you.
These folks, get them to the emergency rooms, and Dr. Blow, you come up here, so you can make a connection that when you get off the ambulance, then you're in this guy's hands. So, say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I am deeply humbled to be able to get him up here before you, to stand in front of these wonderful partners that have helped us throughout many decades at Christa Spa and save lives in our community. I have been in all parts of the Northeast and the Midwest, and I can tell you, I've worked with some of the finest pre-hospital folks that you can imagine. But everyone standing behind me and everyone who is, could not be here and is circulating out through our city delivers the highest quality care that I have had the privilege of experiencing, and it is really because of their great work that they do tirelessly and unselfishly that we are able to do what we do at Spa and Hospital as your Level Two Trauma Center for Corpus Christi. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I don't know that we can bunch up much more than we are here, but we'll get a picture.
Right behind the mayor, go one, there you go. Whoop, nope, nope. Mayor, stand still. Okay, everybody looking this way. Eyes open, smile. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. I'll take it easy. Thank y'all. Thank y'all for everything.
Mayor, Mayor, thanks a lot for the honor. I, I, ay, ay, ay.
Thank y'all. Good to see you again. Thank you, Doctor. Good to see you. Hey, Chief. What's going on here?
And, and before they take off, we had some other partners besides Spa and Hospital. Our friends from CCMC were also here, and we wanted to make sure that we acknowledge them, and also our instructors at Del Mar. Melissa, thank you very much, but thank you for all. It's a, it's a team effort, and we do a good job together. Thank you very much.
Councilman Roy will help me with this one. National Public Works Week. If you're here for National Public Works Week, come on down. but they make your daily life a whole lot easier. I'm kind of trying to think of a gentle way to say this, but when you take a shower and you flush at your house and it all goes like it's designed, it's because these people are doing their work. So, we want to thank you for that. Councilman Roy, you helped me on this proclamation.
I was going to say, without them, we'd be up to our eyeballs in, but anyway. That's right. National Public Works Week. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public, health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Corpus Christi, Texas. These infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees of all levels of government and the private sector. They are responsible for building, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. The year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association.
Now, therefore pursuant to the powers vested in me as the mayor of the city of Corpus Christi, I do hereby proclaim May 19 through 25, National Public Works Week in Corpus Christi, and urge all the citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association, the Public Works Department, and activities and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize a substantial contribution that they have made to our national health, safety, welfare, and quality of life. I'm going to ask Valerie Gray to say a few words. She's the executive director of the Public Works, and I'll probably get in trouble for this, but some of you may or may not know, Valerie came to work for the city of Corpus Christi back, when I started back on the council in 83 or 85. She's been with the city a long time, and she has, I don't know whether she's signed the dotted line yet, but submitted her retirement papers. So, she's going to be leaving us. I don't know how soon. I'm going to try to put a tether on her and keep her around for the new city manager for at least a little while. I don't know whether I'll be successful, but we just owe her a great debt of gratitude of the leadership that she's done, and it's an encouragement for young city employees. She came just as a new, young city employee back in those days and has worked her way up the organizational chart. So, she's an inspiration for people coming, getting in at, at the entry levels that there are opportunities with the city of Corpus Christi, but she's done a great job. Matter of fact, I think your father was probably the mayor at the time, and that's Luther Jones's daughter, if any of you don't know her back there. So, and I was privileged to serve on that council with Luther. But she's going to be missed. She's done great over the week, over her work here, and we're just glad that we've got an opportunity to say thank you to you and for all of these folks that stand behind.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I don't want to cry. Now is not the time to do that. And besides, I have my meeting with Peter tomorrow, so we need to talk. But as far as why we're here, we're here this week to recognize, as the councilman said, the, and celebrate the public work professionals, the men and women that go unnoticed on many days doing the work out there in the field. It's not only your water, wastewater, it's your solid waste pickup, it's your streets that are being repaired, it's everyone and a lot of what work at the city of Corpus Christi that protect our transportation, water, wastewater, solid waste system, and other facilities that are essential for the citizens of Corpus Christi's public health, quality of life, safety, and welfare. The theme, I want to talk about the theme on the poster, if you give me a minute. This is the National Public Work theme, and it says, "It Starts Here." This represents the many facets of our daily life that grow out of the efforts that are put forth by the public work professionals nationwide. The quality of life for the residents of every city, including the city of Corpus Christi, starts with public works, and that is the theme of the poster for this week. So, we appreciate that, Mayor.
Again, thank you on behalf of the citizens and the council for all the work you do. Thank you. This one, I've got Councilman Molina going to help us on this one. Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. Y'all come on down. When, when this is over, Mr. Molina's going to give us a demonstration on riding a motorcycle.
So I, I told my wife I was getting a motorcycle, and that idea went out the window really quick. Happy wife, happy life, fellas. Just saying. Today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of, for of our country. Unlike other vehicle drivers, motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash. Campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. It is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways. It is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules. We urge all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle, and for riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect they deserve.
Now, therefore pursuant to the powers vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Corpus Christi, I do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. In Corpus Christi, encourage all citizens to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community. And who's going to be the spokesman here?
It would be me, sir.
All right. All right.
Coliveris Colt, Richard Caviato. I am the Coalition of Clubs Chairperson here in Corpus. I want to thank the Mayor, City Council for having us and the attention given to motorcycle safety and awareness. As mentioned before, we don't have anything other than our skin out there, so consequently, we do appreciate the heightened awareness, try to keep our fatalities down. We see way too many of them, and Corpus has been spiked in Texas this last year for over 300% of motorcycle fatalities. So I'm working with TexDOT. I meet with them quarterly. We talk safety issues, funding, and all of that, and we know the more education we get, the better off we go and fatalities go down. So it hits close to home here. We've had very important people in this town that have gone down on motorcycles and not got back up, and so that made it a little bit awareness. And our police department, we work with them once a year with the Toys for Tots, and we do things for the community the best we can. And what you see up here is a mixed group of females that ride motorcycles. I am a club member, but I want to just say one thing. When you're out there on the road and you go, "Well, I don't know anybody." I went to high school here at Carroll, then I went to the Marine Corps. I served my country. I went to college in San Marcos at Southwest Texas State. I came back, I worked for the Army Depot. Thirty-six years I put in total civil service with DOD. I ride a motorcycle because I enjoy the freedom, the love of, of the wind in my face, and it's very hard unless you do it to what I'm trying to explain to you. But once again, I'm Richard Caviato. You know somebody that rides a motorcycle. Look for me out there. And once again, thank you very much.
You were doing all right till you got to Southwest Texas. I went to Stephen F. Austin.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is a proclamation for Pride Week. Who's coming down for that? Tom Tagliboo. Trouble personification right there. Councilman Hunter's going to help me with this proclamation.
Thank you. Now, come on in. Come on all the way down. Good-looking group. I guess I'll stand over here so I'm not blocking anybody. All right. The Mosaic Project of South Texas, a local nonprofit organization created in 2016 following the Orlando Pulse nightclub tragedy, is celebrating its fourth annual Pride celebration from June 3rd to, June 3rd to June 9th, 2019. Pride Week is dedicated to honoring the lives lost in the Orlando Pulse nightclub shooting, commemorating the anniversary of the United States Supreme Court's marriage equality ruling, and honoring past contributions, and celebrating the future of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, intersex, asexual community. June 28th, 2019 marks the 50th anniversary of one of the most important events in LGBTQIA community, the 1969 riots at the Stonewall Inn in the Greenwich Village, New York, which galvanized LGBTQIA. There's a, there's a lot of initials in there. I'm sorry. I'm getting it. It's kind of like a tongue twister. New York, which galvanized LGBTQIA individuals to create a new wave of the LGBTQIA rights organizations. Pride Corpus Christi is an annual festival focused on commemorating, educating, and celebrating LGBTQIA equality and human rights. Pride is an event that celebrates love, diversity, and beauty within Corpus Christi, the coastal bend, the state, the nation, and the world.
Okay. Now, therefore pursuant to the powers vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Corpus Christi, I do hereby proclaim June 3rd through 9th, 2019 as Pride Week in Corpus Christi and encourage citizens to join celebrating the dignity, strength, passion, dedication, diversity, and commitment of the LGBTQIA+ community. Signed on May the 21st. So are you the spokesman? Who's the spokesperson?
Hi. Oh, thank you very much. We'd like to thank our sponsors who have made this week possible, which includes the High Res Media Group, Omegraind Studios, Coast Guard Wellness Foundation, Herman &amp; Herman, Keller Williams, Smoothie King, and Apollo Towing, and specifically the City of Corpus Christi, which has been incredible. So the whole purpose of this is to demonstrate how wonderful our city is, how open and affirming and all are welcomed. So thank you very much.
Every time.
Okay. One, two, three.
Ready? Well, open your eyes.
Thank you.
Okay. Good luck to you.
Tom, how you doing?
Good to see you, Tom.
You made a tie, Tom. One of your good ties.
Okay.
All right, the next one, we've got a couple more. The 154th Anniversary of Juneteenth Celebration in the Spirit of Emancipation Days. All right. Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. The day of the last slaves in America were freed was said to be June 19th, 1865, when General Gordon Granger rode on, rode into Galveston, Texas, and issued a general order number three, two and a half years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation. Just think if they'd had email, how quickly it would have happened. Two and a half years to get from wherever they were down to Galveston. That's a long time. Juneteenth serves as a reminder of the sacrifices our ancestors made for freedom and an opportunity to educate our children on the history of our nation and its people. The year 2019 marks the 154th year anniversary of Juneteenth in American history, with Juneteenth serving symbolically and in reality as a reference point from which to appreciate the progress and contributions made by African-Americans to this society. Now, therefore pursuant to the powers vested in me as the Mayor of Corpus Christi, I do hereby proclaim June 9th through 19th, 2019 as the 154th anniversary of Juneteenth Celebration, the Spirit of Emancipation Days in Corpus Christi, and encourage all the citizens to recognize Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day or Emancipation Day, as a time to celebrate African-American freedom. Let us all encourage self-development and respect for all people as we promote and cultivate our knowledge and appreciation of African-American heritage, history, and culture. And are you going to be the spokeswoman for this group?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
All right. There's your proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We thank the City of Corpus Christi very much for this acknowledgement. And as he stated, the travel from Philadelphia all the way down to Galveston, Texas, two and a half years to free the slaves that had been originally taken from the continent of Africa by the white persons in the East who had been refugees and had come over on the Mayflower to be free from their countries and things that were happening to them. And these men, though, went to the continent of Africa to hide out and invade villages and snatch Africans, bringing them on the ships up to New England to be slaves in America for the persons who had gotten tired of all the work they had to do as settlers who had come over on the Mayflower and others. This, of course, spread throughout the country and has been a major undergirding for this country, this country, in many ways. Corpus Christi, Texas is the only city in the United States that celebrates the 10 Days. As a little girl growing up and others, I grew up in Houston, the 19th of June was the one day that Africans and African-Americans and their descendants would gather in the emancipation parks and the places in Houston, have their barbecues outside in their neighborhoods, and celebrate the 19th of June, or shortly called Juneteenth, all over the country. So about 15 or more years ago here in Corpus, several persons sat together and decided, this is such a fantastic thing. We should certainly take more than one day to celebrate this and keep it before the country and the world. And so this idea was developed that let's celebrate 10 days in Corpus Christi. At first, it was five days, and then it spread a few years later, from the 9th to the 19th. Our theme, which is continuous, as you see on our, the T-shirts held here, "From slavery to freedom to education to achievement." This has been the journey of African-Americans in this country, and we pause to celebrate it. We invite all of you to join us. These 15 days that we celebrate here, we'll have things in the back that states the things that happened at each of those days, and our major event is a banquet, which is on the 17th this year. And we always celebrate each year persons in different labor categories. Last year, it was groomers, that's beauticians and barbers and cosmetologists, et cetera, people who groom us. And our national honoree was Eunice Dudley from Indianapolis, who developed, she and I founded the Dudley Company, Beauty Company. This year, we are celebrating pastors from all over the country, and our national person is Fred Gray, who was the pastor and lawyer for Martin Luther King and Rosa Parks. And our national honoree, he will be here to be for our banquet. We will give you all the information about it. And so I simply ask you to all join us, please, in celebrating this in whatever way you can. And if you have children, have them come to the poster contest and make a poster about what freedom really means and win a prize. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, let's stand and get a picture.
C is pronounced "Mee-gee," and she, you know, it's so fierce, John. And this is a gift you're giving her. She's going to take it to that mayor.
I may, how many of you have heard or ever sung the song "Amazing Grace"? Have you ever heard that song? You need to go on the internet and read the history of that song and the history of the author. It was born out of slavery and a life that was changed as a result of a man's acceptance of salvation. And it's pretty obvious in the first line, "Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a wretch like me." Look it up, at its history. Amazing grace. Everybody in the world knows that song, but it was born as a result of a changed life of a man that was involved in the slave trade at one point in his life, and it's made a difference all over the world. So lives can be changed for the better. She is going to be, well, she always has been, but we're, this is a special goodwill ambassador. For those of you that don't know, I mentioned earlier, this is Luther Jones's daughter, and Luther served this community for many, many years. Wonderful fellow. And he really changed the way mayors do business in Corpus Christi for the good, but we all fuss about it. He loved people. He'd retired from being the commander out at the Army Depot. He got to be mayor, so everybody that had anything going on in Corpus Christi, from a breakfast before sunrise to something after dark, and you invited Luther, he'd show up, even after he was elected. It wasn't just a campaign deal. He'd show up. And people in Corpus Christi began to believe that the mayor ought to show up at every event that happens in Corpus Christi. And for those of us that weren't retired, we just can't go to all the events. And so what we've done, we've recruited our council teams to go to some of these events that we get invitations to that we just can't go to. It's not that we don't want to be at the events, but we just can't get there. But Luther ruined it for everybody else. He showed up at everything. He showed up at everything, didn't he?
Yes, he did.
And he had a pocket full of seagulls, little stick 'em stickers, and if you got away with one being stuck on your lapel, you were lucky. If you stayed and talked with him very long, you had three or four, because he'd find a lapel over here, and then he'd find a spot over here. And then before long, it got to be a joke, the kids used to have them all over his face, and he loved to go to schools, that's why they named the school after him, he loved kids. Anyway, I can go on about Luther, he was a great guy. But this is his daughter, she's just as good, or almost. So city of Corpus Christi, be it hereby known to all that Drew Jones, on this day, has been made a goodwill ambassador for her representation of Corpus Christi in Yokosuka, Japan, and in recognition thereof, has been presented with this testimonial certificate and shall forever hold and enjoy a place of high esteem in the minds and hearts of our people. In testimony, therefore, I have herein to set in my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Corpus Christi on May 21st, 2019. Now she is fixing to go, I think, over to see the mayor of Yokosuka, and his name is Mayor. Kamichi. She's been practicing her pronunciation, is that right? All right. Well, we want to wish you the best, and here's a little gift, if you'll take that with us as your goodwill ambassador responsibilities, and present that on your trip over there. And here's your official, show this to the customs.
Get me in the door.
Show that to the customs agent. I don't know that it'll get you back in the country, but it'll get you out of the country. All right, well, let's give her a hand for representing Corpus Christi well, and let's get a picture up here.
Also wanted to say, I gave you all some pictures, because I wanted you to see how past mayors and past councils have supported the sister city movement, and then of course, you know, I had to include a picture of Daddy. That was taken in 1970, and this program started in 1962. Our relationship was in Yokosuka in 1962. And Gil, I saw you speaking Japanese a minute ago, so.
Oh, that's there.
Yes.
Okay. If these folks would join me up here, these are the folks that contribute their time and effort to make our community run a little smoother and give us their advice and input on different things of interest in the community that we have boards and commissions on. So if you would come up to be sworn in to that board or commission. Juliana Carlisle, Animal Care Advisory Committee. Deborah Shores, Animal Care Advisory Committee. Christine R. Harrison, Corpus Christi Commission on Children and Youth. Clarissa Morrow, Corpus Christi Commission on Youth, Children and Youth. Lynn Mutz, I think I said that, Mutes, Mayor's Fitness Council. George W. Woods, Mayor's Fitness Council. Jonathan Ammon, Transportation Advisory Committee. Brandon Harridge, Transportation Advisory Committee. Jeffrey Pollak, Transportation Advisory Committee. And Mr. Bicycle. Did you ride your bicycle over here today, Jeff? Huh? You did? Good. And Judy Telgied, Transportation Advisory Committee. All right, come on down. Jeff was with the MPO and now is over at the port, right? Good for you. All right. Well, if you'll raise your right hand, I will say aye, and then I'll stop, and you state your name, and then I'll read a phrase, and you repeat after me, and we'll get you sworn in, so you can start your public service here in one of our boards and commissions. And we appreciate very much your willingness to do this. Aye. Your name. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of a member of the board to which I have been appointed and upon which I am about to enter and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state and of this city. So help me God. Well, thank you very much for your willingness to serve, and say hello to the council that appointed you, and then we'll go over here and get you signed up and everything. Yes, sir, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Juliana. Thank you so much. Thank you all for serving. We appreciate it.
Did you really ride your bike? Yeah. All right, well, at this point, which really, we really kind of went over the top today, but that's all right, it's fun, and everybody deserved their recognition. We're a little past the 12 o'clock public comment period, so Mr. Rizley, if you and Mr. Pierce will kind of give the instructions, I don't know how many of you have signed up for public comment. How many we got?
21.
Oh, my gosh, okay. That's good. We're here for the ride, so let's start.
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on agenda action items or during the petition's part on non-agenda city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation, and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Assistant City Secretary Paul Pierce, and I'll be conducting the public comment portion of today's meeting. Please know that a recording of this meeting, including your comments, is being made, so please speak into the microphone at the podium, and be sure to state your name and address before making your comments. You may speak about an item on the agenda during this public comment period, or you can simply wait until the item comes up for consideration on the agenda. However, you can only speak about an item one time. Each citizen's comments are limited to three minutes. You'll see a countdown timer at the base of the microphone on the podium at which you will speak. Once your three minutes is up, a buzzer will sound. When you hear the buzzer sound, please end your comments. If you have a petition or information pertaining to your subject, please present it to the city secretary. So we will begin public comment. The first individual who has signed up of the 21 signed up on the list is Jack Gordy.
I'm Jack Gordy, and I live at 4118 Bray Drive, and I'm here for the same thing that I've been coming down in front of the city council about since August of 2014. Nothing's been done, except one council member, and I won't give his name, asked that it be put on the agenda, but nobody else even bothers putting it on the agenda, because evidently they don't care about the disabled people and the handicap people. And I'm talking about blocked sidewalks. I've been, the blocked sidewalks are violating. The city of Corpus Christi has been violating the American Disability Act since October of 1995. The Corpus Christi is violating that law. The law was passed in April of 93, and the city of Corpus Christi was given 30 months to bring everything into compliance, and there's blocked sidewalks all over town. I even gave you a list of three of them that's obvious, and if you, like I've said before, if you'll use your car allowance and drive in your district and drive around, you'll see them too. Why won't this city council do something about it? You were told that they were exempt because they were built before 1992. That is not true. They're only exempt if it is impossible to widen the sidewalk. And none of them that I've seen is impossible to widen the sidewalk. So there's no excuse or reason for the city council to continue violating the federal law. I'm hoping this new city manager cares enough about the disabled people that he will bring the city into compliance with the federal law. It's a disgrace, and I'll say it again, it's a disgrace that this city council does not care.
Thank you, Mr. Gordy.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, the perception is extremely negative, and we have addressed, I know I have addressed with our city attorney. So I think this is a good example of, you know, addressing Mr. Gordy, who has a great point, but I know that he has addressed, Mr. Gordy, I know that I have reached out to you on a legal aspect of this, so can we do that so that we, it is understood that we have, as council or individuals, have addressed this issue? Mr. Miles?
Yeah, we've previously provided memos to the council on this issue, and we can provide those again, if desired.
And with Mr. Gordy? I mean, you've had conversations with.
We have had communications to Mr. Gordy.
All right, Mr. Gordy, you've had your three minutes. All right, thank you very much.
All right, next on the list is Reynaldo Figaroa.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is regarding the rezoning request for the properties on Laguna Shores.
Mr. Figaroa, could you state your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I live at 221 Lola Johnson Road.
Thank you.
Yes, so this is regarding the rezoning request for the property at 2110 Laguna Shores. It's located south of Lola Johnson, between Lola Johnson Road and Hussin Hornet Road. We went through the planning commission with this recently. I know the city staff had recommended denial for the request, and the city planning commission requested, recommended denial for the request, and I know that they're trying to downgrade their zoning requests. At this point, it seems like they're trying to get whatever they can take at this point. The problem is, we have a lot of issues back there on that property. I apologize, I wasn't ready to come up so quickly, I thought there was going to be a process like the planning commission. But as far as, there's traffic concerns, there's major flooding concerns over there. Our property is flooded right now, and it hasn't even rained in a few days. It's flooded because of the water coming up. Our properties always get flooded, and the volume of homes that they're going to build over there is going to cause even more flooding to our properties and possibly loss of property and vehicles. And we have a lot of endangered species out there, birds and animals. It's a place where people come out purposely to stop and take pictures of the wildlife all the time. It's just a really beautiful area. My wife and I bought that house over four years ago. We love living out there, it's quiet, it's beautiful, it's the best part of Corpus Christi, we feel, and we want to try to keep it that way. We encourage development, of course, we don't want to, we're not saying that somebody should buy a property and not be able to do anything with it, because we don't want them to build nothing in our view or whatever. But they have to do it according to the Flower Bluff Area Development Plan, they have to do it in a way that is consistent with the area plan. And that type of density in that area will just ruin the aesthetics of it. Single-family homes, one-acre lots is what it's zoned for right now, and that's what we'd really like to keep it, because anything other than that will actually decrease our property values. If they build something that's, that we don't, that's not aesthetically correct with our area, and people on the neighborhood decide they want to leave the neighborhood, our home values are going to go down, and we won't be able to sell them for what we even bought them for. I appreciate your time, and I trust that our elected officials will do the right thing for the people of Corpus Christi. Thank you very much.
This is in reference to item 27, I think.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Next on the list is Larry Ortega.
Good morning. My name's Larry Ortega. I live at 6765 Wood Iron, and I'm here just to address the council on, I have a contract with the city for the substations, and my contract's about to be terminated. First of all, it was terminated way back in February because of a list of deficiencies that I received by certified letter in April. So I'm wondering, how was I supposed to take care of the deficiencies when they've already pulled the contract out? You know, it doesn't allow me to address them correctly. So that's three months down the line. I just feel that the termination is excessive, the evaluation isn't properly done, and I want to know what warrants the option year, because based on this, you have to have a perfect record to get it, you know? And we're not going to be perfect. Mistakes are going to be made. We just try our best. Further, I get a certified letter, a second one, that my contract is terminated within 30 days. I received this May 15th. 30 days to them is May 31st, May 30th. So I'm wondering if this is even legal. But all I want is a chance to work together with the city. I haven't had any communication from anybody as to these deficiencies. Again, I think the process was handled in reverse. I should have been notified of these deficiencies prior to this going out for bid. And then if the deficiencies aren't met, okay, pull it, but it wasn't done that way. In my opinion, I don't think these deficiencies were ever meant to be addressed, is how I look at it. I don't see any other way. But I'm still willing to do business with the city. I don't feel that this merits a four-year barment, as stated here. You know, I think it's, I mean, where's the justice in that? You know, I don't think I was given a fair chance. I've tried to communicate and reach out, and I was emailed, "Please refrain, Mr. Ortega, from calling me." Well, I mean, when you give me your card and tell me, call you, you know, if there's ever anything I can do, or if you have a question, and I call you, and then I get an email like that, well, I mean, that doesn't say very much, you know? So again, I think these issues are minor, I think they can be addressed if I was given at the right time, not after, not three months after they pulled the contract out, or put it out for bid, rather. So there, I think that's about it, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rizley, would you get with him, make sure we've followed the proper procedure and respond to his comments on that? If you'll get with Mr. Rizley or someone in his office, we'll pursue.
We'll bring in the police chief as well, this is PD.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next is Andrew Otis.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Otis, I represent Corpus Christi Illumina, who owns the former Sherwin facility on the north side of Corpus Christi Bay. I would like to speak on item 34 on the agenda, and I would like to speak about it at the time that is considered by the council.
That'll be fine. Thank you very much.
All right, next on the list is Gloria Scott.
Good morning. My name is Gloria Scott. I live at 4422. I live at 4422 South Alameda Street, Corpus Christi, Texas 78412. I am rising on behalf of Hannah Carter, who is the chair of the Juneteenth Coalition, and with other persons, Alexis Williams, the president of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority and its members, a public service sorority here in Corpus Christi. We look forward to you. We are speaking and directing this to our new city manager, Mrs. Zanani. We look forward to your participation in events sponsored throughout the year by many organizations, and many events held at the O'Veil Williams Center on Winnebago Street in the formerly black neighborhood, and your participation in the hill crest untangling, whatever one wants to call it, and the things that are happening there. And we also invite you to go to Solomon Coles High School, formerly the old, the black high school that blacks could go to in Corpus Christi, to the museum on African-Americans, and review and see what has happened in this city. And all of us stand ready to assist you in any way possible, as we have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Next is Rebecca Rost, it looks like. Root.
My name is Rebecca Root, R-O-T-T. I reside at 325 Lola Johnson Road. I would like to make my public comments when the board hears the zoning request change, item number 27. It's the zoning for 2110 Laguna Shores Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next is Hunter Sturch.
I would just like to say that I believe that we're all trying to rezone an area that had a plan. I would just like to know what happened to that plan, because the plan that we'll take forth now will basically increase everybody's taxes, but actually make their homes less desirable to the people that are already there and are already paying taxes. So I would just like to state that I oppose. Thank you.
That's item 27, is that correct? Item 27 that you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Next is Jerry Hartung.
I'd also like to reserve my time for item 27.
All right. If you're here for item 27, you've got the two times. So if you, if your name is on here to speak to item 27, and you don't want to, just raise your hand, and he can mark your name off, and/or you can speak now, so, but we hate to, I know you may not be here when it appears on the agenda, but you will be given that opportunity when it does appear. So yes, sir, you're on the list, you want to, you want to defer-
Carl Slaughter.
Carl Slaughter, okay. Anyone else? All right. I think we've gotten your name, and you've already spoken. Yes, ma'am.
Maggie Hartung.
Maggie Hartung, okay. Yes, sir, in the blue.
Darcy Alway.
Darcy, got him?
Who was, I'm sorry, who was the last one?
Darcy. Darcy?
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, well, we'll make, you're, you're deferring until the agenda item comes up.
Correct.
Okay. Now, back to the list, whoever else is next.
All right. Next is Andrew Curder Verden.
Andrea.
Andrea, okay.
Now, are you wanting to speak on an agenda item, or are you wanting to speak now?
I'll just speak on the agenda.
Okay. All right. If there's others, I think yours was one of the other agenda items, I forget the number now, but-
33 and 34.
33 and 34, something like that. So anybody else here to speak on an agenda item that they don't want to use their time now? Okay, those, those two there, thank you very much.
Okay. So next is Joe Gonzalez. Joe Gonzalez. All right. Next is Beck Bruen.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name is Beck Bruen. My residence is 15 Beechwood, Rockport, Texas 78382. I'd like to start by recognizing and thanking city staff members Dan Grimsbow and Steve Ramos for their continued and open dialogue with port staff over the last several months as it relates to all matters water. I'm here today at my capacity as a consultant to the Port of Corpus Christi. Since last summer, Dan and Steve have had a standing, bi-monthly meeting with Sarah Garza, the port's director of environmental planning and compliance, and myself, and we believe these meetings have helped city and port staff to stay on the same page, so to speak, on various water matters, but especially on the topic of seawater desalination. As I'm sure you're all aware, the port began the process of working to secure seawater desal permits for two different port-owned sites last year. The port continues to strongly maintain that this due diligence is meant to complement, not in any way impede the ongoing efforts of the city to establish its two preferred seawater desal sites, that's the process that's ongoing, being led by your consultants, Fries and Nichols. It's with a shared interest in mind that I wish to attempt to correct a statement that was made last week about the port's efforts during a presentation made by the Fries and Nichols team member Nikolai Vouchkov. It was stated by Nikolai that the port had withdrawn a permit application related to one of the port's original two sites. And I'm here to clarify that, for the record, the port has not withdrawn any permit application related to its properties located at Harbor Island and the La Quinta Channel. The port recognizes the Harbor Island was withdrawn, or was previously, excuse me, excluded from consideration by the city consultants. That point is very well understood. But I did want to correct the withdrawal statement to make clear that the port continues its efforts to secure permits for La Quinta, and that the city and its consultants can continue their evaluation of La Quinta as a potential site, should you and they see fit. Let me conclude by stressing again how much the port appreciates the opportunity to collaborate with the city and its staff on the shared goal of a drought-proof water supply for a growing region. Sustainable water was noted as a top threat dating back to the port's 2013 strategic plan. I know you're aware of that. It's imperative for us all to work together to find solutions for the job creating industrial growth that we know will continue. And I'm happy to make myself available to any of you at any time if you have any questions moving forward. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate all your work.
Next is Sylvia Tryon Oliver.
Sylvia Tryon Oliver, 2814 Rogers Street. And this is to welcome our new city manager, greetings, and to also encourage you to please keep us in mind as you do your diversity planning, and to include us at the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Susie Saldana.
Good morning. I want to first congratulate you on your selection of our new city manager, and thank you for coming to us, and on behalf of C-COS, United Teachers and School Employees, we really want to welcome you to our city, and invite you to visit us as well. And on behalf of our community, that you come out and see our whole community, we welcome you with open arms, and we look forward to the things you can bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Margaret Fratila.
Margaret Fratila, 3606 Tripoli Drive. Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council, for everything that you're doing for us, and seeing you in a community to all the businesses. I love Chamber of Commerce, and thank you so much for selecting the city manager, which is very, who is very interested in a business community, I mean, small business. I heard your speech on the radio, so it's like really awesome. We listen to you, we're watching what you're doing, we are proud of you. Thank you so much. And I want to thanks to Assistant City Manager Constance and Amanda for the fact that they were helping me in 2018, in April, when I came to you with a bill of $2,500 for a property that was vacant, and apparently the city has a policy, I don't know if this is a policy or is something that Mr. Valvolek does, because I was, we were billed for all these, you know, amounts without having anybody in the property. So apparently what the city does, if we have a property where the tenant is moving and we ask the city to turn off the water, they are not going to do it. So apparently, when you open the service utilities, they wanted you, as a manager, to go there with all the documentation from the courthouse to show who is the, you know, the owner. Apparently, we had a very big issue in that, and when I brought the issue up here, I said, "We don't need a consultant, we just probably need a Texas Rangers," because something is going on in this community, people, they are over, overbilled. So the next thing that I heard, the city manager resigned. So to me, we still have a problem over there. Just happened last week, one of the tenants moved, and I asked to turn off the service. They are not going to, because they said they don't have enough people to do that. Apparently, if you're not in town, and you are out of town, again, you're billed. So I asked several times to, "Please, let's put on the agenda," and thank you so much, Council Lady, for today stepping in. You remind me of Barbara Canales, because she stepped in the first meeting, and she said, "You know what? I'm going to change the policy. I can see people suffering." So thank you so much. Took me nine months to change the red light camera, took Mr. Gordy four years, never happened. So thank you. And thank you to all of you, if you really step up and think about the community and communicate to us, because it's not only you that see that, or the people in the audience. All the people in Corpus Christi, they see that. I didn't realize how many people watch it. And you know what they said? "Why are you wasting the time?" Because nothing happened. So please put an agenda, the way how we turn off and turn off the water, how the utilities, they are, you know, billed. And I will be very happy to hear that somebody is going to do that. I remember Debbie, once she was here, she did try to put in an agenda, and it never happened. We need to change the policy, we need to do something about that, because the end of the month approaching, and people, they will be furious, as they are right now, because they still have a bill that is unjustified. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
The next person on the list is Adam Haseb, and I have a note here, Mayor, from Mr. Haseb, asking if Margarita Fratila can speak for him.
Yes, now, now I'm speaking in behalf of Mr.-
So- I don't know that, I think he, she's spoken, so I'm not-
It's for him. That's for him, and that's about it.
The person has three minutes. That's, that's the rule.
That's for Mr. Haseb. I'm talking in behalf of Mr. Haseb. I have his documentation here, I have, he gave me the note to talk in his behalf. So the note is here.
So is Mr. Haseb here?
No, he's not here. He's in Austin. So he has a house over here, and he gave me all the bills, so I need to talk for him.
Yeah.
Our rules do not provide-
I believe if you just give the information to the people of the utilities to try to get it resolved, as opposed to this, to the public-
Okay, sounds good, because he wanted to fly from Austin, he was studio, so I said, "Don't do a drama," because these people are very understanding.
I understand. You get with Mr. Miles, and get that over to the utilities people, so they can review the bill, I think we'll get it dealt with.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next on the list is Vernon Cordova.
My name's Vernon Cordova. I live at 3137 Crestwater Drive, and I have a little concern on some of my payments on my water bill. I've gone through the trouble of getting all the statements from 2018, and getting a total price on how much I owed versus 2019. I don't know what type of policy we have here, but with Corpus Christi growing the way it is, on the south side, during Hurricane Harvey, I was out of water, and then when we did get the water, we had to boil it, there's a lot of issues, and the, I've already found a discrepancy on one, so what I need to do is speak with these people again, and try to resolve it, and I wanted to bring it up to your attention, that there may be a change of policy with this new south side that we have. There's a lot of people coming in, and new families coming in. If we can't handle our water situation now, I don't know how that Mary Road Pipeline's going, but if we can't handle our water situation now, what are we going to do with all these new families here in Corpus Christi?
All right. Mr. Collins is right there, and the lady in the back, I think, will address your billing issues. Thank you very much.
Oh, good.
Okay. The next person on the list is David Newstead. Mr. Newstead, you noted that you wanted to speak on agenda item 18. Would you like to speak now, or on agenda, when the agenda item comes up?
That's a consent agenda item?
Yes.
Is it going to be, is it going to be addressed one by one?
If, if you want to pull, we can pull it to discuss it.
I'll address it when it comes up.
Okay. All right. And the last person on the list is Robin Cobb, the same question on number 18. Would you like to address it now, or when the item comes up?
I think now.
Okay.
What number was that, 19?
That's Parkway, right to the island.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Robin Cobb. I live at 7032 Lakeview Drive. The topic of interest to me, number 18, has to do with the urban transportation plan, specifically the part that would include a causeway over the Laguna Madre, and with the landing on the county's property on North Padre Island. I just really wanted the council to be aware that there's a lot of resource concerns on the island in that particular area. That property was bought for conservation purposes, and has a, it's currently in a coastal barrier resources system designation, which means federal money cannot be spent for infrastructure that I guess would include the causeway and a road onto that property. There's critical habitat for listed bird as part of that unit, I mean, as part of that property. There are two threatened federally designated threatened species that use the flats on the bay side of that property. Crossing the Laguna Madre would include impacts to a lot of seagrass and wetlands and tidal flats. So it's sort of the landing, the route of the causeway, causes me a lot of concern, and I would encourage the city to go back and coordinate with the federal and state resource agencies that will be a part of any permitting for that. I'm also concerned about the safety connotations with this causeway, because it really seems more to be a facilitation of development sort of causeway as it gets out there. And I think having taxpayers pay for such an enormously expensive undertaking, just to put more additional people at risk as sea levels rise and storms become more severe, and they rise, ride on higher water levels, you're just going to increasingly put more people at risk on Mustang and North Padre Island. So in my opinion, that's things that the council needs to take into consideration with this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's the last person who's signed up on the list. If there's anyone else who did not have an opportunity to sign up, but who would like to speak before we close this public comment period, this is your last opportunity. Please make your way to the podium now.
My name is John Medina. I reside at 4931 Mokri Drive, and I'm just here to thank you all for listening, the last comment I made about the, the bills, the water bills. And I want to welcome Peter Zanoni. He reminded me of what I had said last time, that y'all are going to try and work with the, with the people, and I'm happy to hear that. And also, the, the waste, I don't want them going around the trash cans, and then having to go back and picking them up, but as a citizen, I'm concerned, and just here to thank you all for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, there being no one else, the public comment period is now closed. Mayor?
All right. Let's go back then to... And for those in the public that are listening, the rules are that the council really can't respond to comments made during the public comment period. So therefore, what you hear is up to your interpretation as to factual or not factual. So just make sure you listen carefully because we're not allowed to make any rebuttals. Over here to item F would be the city manager's report. Mr. Zanoni?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and members of the council, Peter Collins is going to give us an update in a moment on the water billing situation. But I did want to give two updates on city services that are triggered by the summer months that are upcoming to let you know and let the community know. So our city pools, we have a total of seven city pools, and they will begin service May 25th, Saturday, May 25th, known as Splash Memorial Weekend. The city pools will be open. Residents can find the pool locations and the hours of operation by calling the city at 826-PLAY. And you can also go online at www.ccparkandwreck.com to find those locations. And those pools are great. I know my oldest son Tanner is a lifeguard. And so many a summer have gone, and this is in San Antonio, but I'm sure the same applies here, to the pools to drop them off. And families love those pools. So we're glad to let the community know. Our seven pools are opening. We look forward to a safe and cool summer at the pools. And then secondly, another summer event is the library summer reading program. And this is something that we need to get our little kids out there engaged in, even though it is summer and they may be at the pools. There's books to be read. And last summer, the city residents here checked out over 109,000 books in our summer months. We have six library locations with more than 3,000 kids participating last year, and we hope we have as many this year in our parks program called Library Summer Reading Program. So those are just two quick notes for you this morning or afternoon to let the community know as well that are watching. And Mayor, that's the end of my statements. But Peter, are you going to do just update now? Okay, Peter Collins is going to give us an update. I had the opportunity to meet with Peter yesterday for lunch. And one of the things, the primary thing we spoke about were the delinquent accounts. And I challenged him to make sure that we have done everything we can do to engage the close to 15,000 accounts, it's 14,500 residential accounts, to make sure they're fully aware that they're delinquent. But talk to them about payment plan options. And so Peter's going to talk to you about a couple of things to include calling as many customers as we can and beginning to get information on why they haven't set up a payment plan with the city. We're also going to, as he's going to mention, engage some of our stakeholder groups out there to help us get the word out. So instead of people calling and coming here, we're going to go out to the community. We want to make sure people are aware they have options to pay back these delinquent accounts. So we want to exhaust everything we can do to make sure people are aware and we give them a chance. Peter's going to talk about extending that shut-off period, a few additional, actually, up until July 1, to make sure we can do that one last and aggressive outreach. So Peter, I'm going to turn it over to you for your update.
Thank you, Peter. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I want to talk again about the delinquent accounts, and we talked about the disconnects. And we call the period that we stop disconnect as the grace period. It was started back in September of 2018 because there were multiple major issues with the utility billing system. It looks like I'm having a technology issue here. The grace period meant that there would be no disconnects of city services until the utility billing system became stable. And the thing is about the grace period, that was the entire utility bill. That was the grace period that no city service would be actually disconnected. I can't read the screen without my glasses, and I got to switch the papers here. I got my glasses, but if I do that, I can't read. So just work with me. I try to get the glasses for two and I get dizzy. So during the grace period, utility bills were sent out with the intent that they would be paid. And if there were an issue, or if there was an issue with the utility bill, the city would address the issue accordingly. And that's always been a conscious, you know, trying to reach out continuously during the whole billing issue. Was it the right decision to stop disconnecting at the time? Of course it was. There was a lot of confusion. It was the perfect storm. We know the history behind that. So we managed through it and we continued on. During the grace period, a number of residential and commercial accounts became delinquent. I should be switching this too. Delinquent accounts, 14,646, which consists of commercial and residential accounts for a total of $7,890,812... Wait, what am I doing here today? 594 commercial accounts for a total of $1,178,368. And then the remainder, 14,502 residential accounts for a total of $6,712,508.7. The grace period before was going to end at the end of May, but now it will end at the end of June. Delinquent notices will be going out the first week of July. The customer will have 14 days to contact the city and discuss different payment options. I just want to bring your attention to that obviously I've been doing these presentations and mentioned this, there are great concerns in the community, as Peter mentioned. And I've been approached a number of times, actually folks is coming up to my office, which is fine. I'm here to talk to anybody. But we've got to reevaluate and make sure we do our absolute due diligence, that we get the word out to the whole community and make sure that we have a successful outreach. So the message is please make contact with the city. By making contact with the city before July 1 and working out a payment arrangement, customer will not be charged any late fees on past due amount. The city does, and this is extremely important, the city does recognize everyone's situation is different and will be taken into consideration. Now we have the direct outreach. We've already coordinated. The billing office is gearing up, getting ready to start making calls. We have the list of all the delinquent accounts. The city staff will be reaching out to customers with past due accounts. We'll also be asking questions of whether or not they were aware. And if not, then how would it have been better to communicate? Not that we have to relive this in the future, but it's always nice to know what is the media mix when you need to inform the community about different issues. Staff will be discussing possible options for the amount passed due. Also, the city will be contacting community leaders to assist in getting the word out to the community. This is a very important part because, as we know our community, not everybody has the time to watch the news at the end of the day or listen to the radio, out working, taking care of kids, whatever it may be. So we need to reach into the community and meet with the leaders so we can actually express what's going on and how we can handle the issue of a past due account. And again, I want to stress, the city does recognize everyone's situation is different and will be taken into consideration. This is the right thing to do at this moment in time. The first time I spoke with you, we're back in the first week of October. We've come a long way. We wouldn't be at this position if we didn't. If we weren't successful in stabilizing the billing system and having a positive audit, now it's time to bring closure to it. But it's worth doing the due diligence to go for an extra month and get those calls made. And then past that point, the delinquent notices go out. And if somebody hasn't paid the bill, then the city process should take over at that point. And we'll keep track of who we contacted and when, so we'll have the list of everybody that this was discussed to. Any questions?
Ms. Roig?
Thank you. Thank you for your explanation. And Mr. Zanoni, thank you for your efforts in this. So my only concern would be the staffing of being able to take the incoming calls. Because as you well remember, or maybe not, the amount of calls that came in when everything happened here was extreme, and we weren't staffed to take that. So here, we're being proactive, but as well as, you know, being able to expect the calls coming in hopefully because of this campaign outward reach. So are we going to be okay in that aspect?
Yeah, we've definitely, we're calling, we're changing it up to where we're making the call, hopefully to eliminate the huge amount of calls and folks showing up when disconnects start to continue again. Our goal is to try to solve the issue with a number of delinquent accounts through payment plans or whatever other means there is. But yes, we're highly concerned about that. And I'll remind you, we actually replaced the entire phone system so we can actually handle a larger amount of call volume. But we're also, when we bill in June, we have 20 billing cycles. We'll be putting a postcard to say the count is delinquent. Please call us. And there's a number of different, they can leave a voice recording. They will call them back. We can manage through this. UBO from lessons learned is that they know how to gear up for this. And also be working on Saturday to do the outreach. We know that you can't call past 6 o'clock. People are not receptive to that. But we can call during the day and the results could be pretty positive for us. Just like the missed bills, if you remember the 800 and the other ones, we called all them, all those people. And actually, everybody was pretty cooperative as far as collecting money on bills that never went out.
Ms. Garza?
Yesterday, I received an email that had a schedule and a map related to vector spraying for mosquitoes. And so we could put something out that has all these dates so we could actually put them on our social media pages and get the word out. Some people are not going to react or address an issue until you actually turn them off. I mean, I'm convinced that some people will be disconnected. You want to minimize the amount of inconvenience and hardship you create on some of the public. But we have a system, water system that we have to maintain. And I heard the gentleman talking about a water bill and not wanting to pay, or not paying his bill because of water bill and shouldn't have. You still have, if you have an issue, then it takes money to address that issue or to maintain and keep the quality that you expect, that you have to provide. And so again, the best communication we can get possible, I think social media is a great tool to be able to get that word out. So we get a communicate of some sort that tells, "Hey, drop dead date, these dates are going to be enforced and there will be some disconnects coming if commercial accounts and your residential accounts don't address and work out some payment plan." But I was here last Saturday, excuse me, last Friday afternoon, coming to help a family member to deal with some of her delinquent issues. And there was hardly anybody in the hall out there. There was no traffic. And so even though we've been communicating, we've been talking about this coming, there's some people that have not responded and have not come in to try to see if they can take care of the accounts. And we don't just provide water on our utility bills. We also provide solid waste pickup. We also provide wastewater service and what we do charge in order to be able to maintain our streets. So there's other services that we're providing on our utility bills. It's not just the water. And so when you do not pay your utility bill, it creates a hardship in the system. And the rest of us that are paying in order to be able to maintain that system feel that maybe, you know, we're not getting a fair shake. So again, you know, that's the position I take. So thank you.
Ms. Roy?
Based on your numbers that you showed, what percentage, or out of that, I think it was like 590 commercial accounts and then 14,500 residential, what percentage to date do you think that you've collected so far or set up on payment plans?
I don't have the exact answer on that, but we have been able to, as far as not the delinquent accounts, people come in all the time to go ahead and address their delinquent accounts or if they're past due. As far as the no bills, we're quite successful of recouping that cost. But there's traffic all the time about, you know, "I'm 31 days past," and they'll come in and correct those accounts. Sometimes they go back and forth because they need to either make the payment in full or in half or a third. But I don't have the number to date from when we turned it off or stopped the disconnects to what has been the success rate of delinquent accounts being, coming in and being addressed. I don't have it, but I can get it for you.
I think that would be good because I'm also curious as to what feedback you're getting already. I mean, is it something where the consumer has said, "Yeah, just a matter of time. I knew that I would be contacted." Or does it seem like it's a surprise? I'd like to see a little bit of feedback on just what the climate is. I think it's going to help as we go forward and communicate and we extended that deadline to, you said, July 1.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, I think that's a fair... We want to give everybody an opportunity to pay that is willing to pay. If they say, "I'm sorry, I'm not paying," then I think you say, "Okay, we're going to shut your water off." It's just going to be a real simple policy once July 31 gets here, or June 30th gets here. Because it, I mean, some of these have been since October of last year, and they just think ignoring them is going to make it go away. Well, it's not up to the rest of the taxpayers and the utility payers to pay their share of their use in water or utilities. Everybody needs to jump on the bandwagon. So I understand the compassion and the interest, and if we can work out a payment plan and buying them another month worth of time to communicate, I think so. But I think this council has demonstrated that we're running a business down here and you can't provide a service if you're not going to be paid for it. So I hope the month of June is very fruitful. I can't imagine commercial customers ignoring a utility bill, though. That's just, I don't have as much sympathy for them as I do residential. But we'll give them the 30 days to us, just to be fair. Anything else?
No, that's all I have today. I was really focused on this. Is there any other questions?
No, sir. Get back to work.
You're welcome. Get back to work? Yes. Have a good day.
All right, thank you. Okay, down to other, I don't think there's any others. We're getting to the minutes, and I think Mr. Malina's got a comment he'd like to make before we authorize the approval of the minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I would actually like to make a motion to reconsider regarding the charter review discussion that we had, the Agenda item last week.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Well, the item of...
All right, there's a motion to reconsider last week's Agenda item number...
26.
Was it 26?
26.
Item 26, which was discuss with possible action regarding the process for charter review. And the motion that was made by Mr. Malina last week was to form a charter review committee to discuss the charter review with a focus of extending city council terms to four years, city council compensation, and miscellaneous housekeeping items with a target election date of November 2019, seconded by Mr. Smith. And he's making a motion to reconsider that. And there's a second. Any further discussion on the motion to reconsider? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion then is up for reconsideration, or the item is up for reconsideration.
Thank you, Council, for indulging me. After much more consideration and knowing that we have a charter review every two years, if by moving forward with this charter review... if by moving forward with this charter review and the future of it, we're not going to have another opportunity to discuss a charter review for another two years. And so with that in mind, I'd still like to include the details that we discussed that was voted on last agenda item last week. But I also wanted to still create the committee, but make it a comprehensive charter review to look at the entire charter and see what changes, what adjustments, what revisions need to be made. And that would be done by a committee again. And it would also include the compensation, term limits, and any other issues that might arise during that review process. And in doing so, I know that we had discussed a target date of this November, 2019. But if we're going to do a comprehensive review, I think that we're going to need to push that to 2020. And I think that in doing so, that it's going to be hard to get a date firmed up right now. So I would like to have the committee, along with the council, discuss or determine when that date is going to be for 2020. So I would like to make that motion, but I probably need some help with the wording.
Yes. So how about this? A motion to form a charter review committee to discuss a comprehensive review of the city charter with a focus on extending city council terms to four years, city council compensation, and miscellaneous housekeeping items with a target election date of as soon as feasible, or would you prefer it to say as determined by the council?
As determined by council. And is there, did you have a comprehensive charter review in there?
Yes, at the beginning. Motion to form a charter review committee to discuss a comprehensive review of the city charter.
So move.
Are you listening?
Yes, so let me restate the motion. Motion to form a charter review committee to discuss a comprehensive review of the city charter with a focus on extending city council terms to four years, city council compensation, and miscellaneous housekeeping items with a target election date of, or as determined by council.
Well, I mean, I think we determined November 2020.
I think it's...
Or we can leave it open. I mean, doesn't matter.
Well, there's two really election dates you can have. One is either May of 20 or November of 2000. I think there's only two official election dates.
Those are the two uniform election dates, yes.
If the committee got...
In 2020.
Correct.
Or any time during the year, but so...
Correct.
Just say by the, I'd say set by the, I mean, if you want to put it for 20, that's fine. Be more, or just...
I mean, leave it open as he said, just set by the council, and that way it can be either or. I'll second that.
All right, is there any discussion on that? Ms...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Garza.
The only concern I had with us moving, which we've done a comprehensive charter review probably about five years ago or six years ago. We've done some revisions maybe two years ago. But I think that the biggest concern that I have in moving it into an election year is that the politics, this extension of terms or staggered terms could become a political football in an election year, and some people that might think it's a good idea and might support it, might not do it if it think it's going to hurt their election chances. And so it's not going to affect me because I'm termed out after this term, and I've got nothing to gain or lose either way. But if we're really looking to see if we can secure some continuity on the council, and particularly in a period where we're having a lot of opportunities and change and growth, I really think we need to give it the best chance of passing. We'll leave it open for 2020, if we do it possibly in May. That might not be as, have as big an impact or concern than if we have it in November of 2020. So again, if we think we can get all the things done and we can do a comprehensive review, I think at least it's a minimum of a year to 14-month activity if you do it from now to mid-spring of 2020. Well, that'd be a year. That'd be already more than a year. So I don't know if we can get it done by May of 2020, but again, I just caution, caution those that are looking to make some changes and for the good, to actually get them passed without creating some hardship on some of the incumbents that might support these changes. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Garza, on your comments. But, you know, that's the politics of it. If we hold a May election, it's going to come at a cost, and that cost will be six figures, $100, $200,000. And personally, I'd rather save the taxpayers a few bucks and take the lumps on the political side with it and go ahead and do it in November. It gives the review committee more time to do it with it. And the voters don't want it, then the voters don't want it with it. And we're telling, giving them direction on where we want to go, and I think we ought to stand up to that in November of 2020 with the voters on there and save our taxpayers some money. Thanks.
Mr. Roy.
I agree with what Councilman Smith's saying. I mean, 2020, November's a big election. Some of the things that we're looking at are common sense things that I think that we've talked about or we've seen in terms of hindering the ability for council to perform. And I think we owe it to the community to make sure that we have the greatest number of voters that can participate. And as much as we'd like to say that there's a lot of people that would probably come out in May, we know that with the November election, that's going to get a pretty good turnout. So I'm okay with moving it to November. The other thing is, is that we've got to put a lot of thought into this, and I think that 14 months are, I think that gives us, how many months? 14 plus months? For that committee to do their job, it's important that we let them do their job and we don't speed this process up. So, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hernandez.
Okay, for, to start off with, I didn't want to have a committee to begin with. Wanted for us to do it as a council so we can get through it quicker and actually deal with it with staff directly and make it something that we can work on. Now, I understand the reasoning, political cover, whatever you want to call it, on some of these things, but to drag it out on this is really not necessary. We could, I believe we could do this, we have the people that we're planning to select, and I've talked to some of you about some of those individuals, are smart individuals that I think could do it pretty quickly. And for just to drag this out for the sake of dragging it out or to put it into an election a year and a half from now, it, I think we're just, we're prolonging the inevitable type thing. So it's, I think we should keep it the way we selected. It was a compromise between trying to do it quickly and having the committee partake in it. I think we should leave it as it is. Thank you.
Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry if I missed what conversation I missed on this last week. You know, I have been discussing a little bit of this with other members of the council, but I think with the momentum that we have going and the changes that we have going, Councilman Garza, I think that that was very well put. We have a lot of great things going, we have a brand-new city manager. I'm not too worried about potentially getting this done in the next election. I think waiting until November 2020, you may see an entire different group up here by the time that comes up. And our charter changes will then be their weight to carry, and I don't know if that's necessarily fair either, so that's how I feel.
Ms. Juarez.
Thank you. Well, I just want to thank everybody because I think my stance in supporting this last week was still everything you've said today. And so thank you for reconsidering that, because I think this is, number one, respectfully, it's not dragging anything out. This is involving the people that should be involved in this process, and that's our citizens. We can put whatever we want on this table, it's up to them to vote and to say yes or no, what they want, as you said, Mr. Smith, what they want to see move forward. But I do not like, as said before, this is an opportunity that many of us up here have said, God, that charter, we've got to change that charter, or we couldn't move forward for whatever reasons. This is the time to do it, and there is no rush. So I really appreciate everyone on board because I think we're going to, in the end, I think it's going to be a good thing in more than one way, the focused areas, but also in a lot of, I mean, down to a noise ordinance, to, you know, many little things that affect lives every single day. So I think you all will be happy in the end of the changes that will come forth, and it will be you who will be helping in making those changes. So thank you all.
Okay. Any public comment on the motion to initiate the charter review committee that would come back, look at specific items, and then kind of overall? I don't know that there's a burning desire to totally, you know, wipe out the charter, but there are some things that need to be done, but they need to be done thoughtfully. And just so that, to keep you from getting heartburn, that any charter change that is initiated by this council that would be a benefit to the position in the future, as I understand it, is prohibited from, the council members that initiated that change would be prohibited from benefiting from that change. So for those that are saying we're wanting to raise our own salaries, even, and while we may think that's a good idea for the future, we as sitting council members would not be able to participate in that increase. I think that's a charter provision, or it may be state law. If it's not, it ought to be a moral or an ethical rule, that you don't go in and increase your own salary on this sort of stuff. So I think there's been a lot of talk, and I think studies will show that more and more cities are going to four-year terms, whether it be staggered, this is what the committee can all work out. But for those out there that might think, well, these people are just trying to give themselves a raise, we would be prohibited either by charter or state statute, and if that wasn't good enough, I would think either morally or ethically, we'd be prohibited from doing it. I certainly wouldn't, and I think the rest of this council would be too. So there's a motion on the floor, a second, no public comment.
Mr. Melby.
Mayor, we moved the last charter review to increase the salary of the council, and you guys voted it down, you shut us down from that.
Well, be careful, I say you guys.
Well, the council did. The council did.
Don't blame our forefathers, I mean, don't blame us for our forefathers.
I think there needs to be a clarification whether a person can vote for the approval of that committee or not. If we make a recommendation, or the council makes, the charter review board makes a recommendation to increase salaries, I don't see a conflict of interest if it doesn't come from you, if it comes from them. I don't see that being a conflict of interest.
Well, we've got to put, we've got, we've got to take the vote to put it before the voters.
I understand that. And you talked about two elections, we have a primary anyway that's coming up in May, that if that's an issue, there'll be a, there'll be a primary, most likely there will be.
They can look at those dates, but I think you're right. And I think this is something that, from the ground rules, and that's what I understand, that was, that really served a great frustration for the last charter review committee, was that you folks spent 18 months trying to do something, and then when it was presented, the council changed it on the day they heard it, and it negated a lot of the work that you did, which was pretty disappointing. And that was, that plus some other things, I think, we ultimately got ourselves in trouble based on some of the changes that the council made that were not part of the charter review committee's recommendation. And hopefully, we're going to straighten some of those mistakes out that the council made last time, not the charter review committee. So, thank you very much. Any other comments?
Mr. Roy?
Yeah, I'm sorry, one last comment. You know, the experience that we had going through and hiring a city manager and opening it up and getting feedback from the community was instrumental in helping us make the right decision. I think that process that we went through, I'm hoping that we duplicate that to a degree, hence we have that committee in place. And I also think that it's important to hear from the community in terms of things that they may know of from the charter that needs to be changed. This needs to be a very visible process because we want to make sure that we're not acting in a vacuum. And I hope that we can go through and have a similar outcome that we did in terms of being able to hire the right city manager. So thank you.
All right, there's a motion that establishes a committee, gives the framework for certain things, but they'd look at the whole committee, I mean, the whole charter, and then come back with a date recommended on one of the two election dates, depending on when they finish their work. Is that the gist of the motion?
Yes.
All right. Do we want to, why don't you call the roll since there may be some negative votes on this?
Okay, so for passage of motion number 26, Mayor McComb.
Aye.
Councilmembers, Roy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Barera?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Hernandez?
No.
Hunter?
No.
Molina?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Mayor.
All right. Yes.
Can I, one, just to clarify, to Mr. Smith's point, if we did this in November 19, 2019, the cost would approximately be $90,000. So that $90,000 is something we're going to save the taxpayers by doing November of 2020.
Okay, the motion passed. And the other thing out of that, and some of you have, I think, I've gotten a notice from the city secretary, two or three have submitted their name, and the committee will be made up of council members suggesting a person to serve on that committee with the mayor appointing, getting an appointment of a person, and also the chairman. And I've gotten two or three, I think, names coming in, but we haven't gotten everybody. So the sooner you get your appointee to serve on that committee to the city secretary, then we'll be able to establish the committee. Okay, so that was a motion, huh?
May I ask to consider the minutes?
We haven't done the minute yet?
No, sir.
Oh, yeah, we had to change that first. All right, now, now that we've got the minutes...
Move to approve.
Entertain a motion for passage of the minutes.
So move.
There's a motion and a second for approval of the minutes as amended.
No, as presented.
As presented.
Yeah, because we reconsidered item 26, so we started anew like it had never been voted on.
Consent.
All righty then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, we got the, let's see where we are on our agenda here. Okay, we've got the minutes, we don't have any board committee appointments. On the consent agenda, our items, let's see if we can get through this, and then we'll take our lunch break. There was a couple people said they wanted to speak, I think, on a consent agenda or two. And I think I've gotten word that item number seven is going to be pulled from the consent agenda, is that...
Yeah, Mayor, right. Item number five and seven, we want to delay until the 11th of June, if that's okay?
Number five until six, 11?
Just five, number five and 11. I'm sorry, five and, sorry, just number five and just number 11. We'll take those off this agenda and put them on the June 11th.
But it's item number seven that you want to pull?
Yeah, sorry, five and seven, yeah.
Five and seven for six, 11?
Right, that's it.
All right. All right, five and seven have been pulled at the request of the city manager. Other items, number, anybody have any items? And somebody wanted to make, did somebody from the audience have some items on which one?
And I'd like to pull item 20, please.
All right, 18, was somebody wanted to pull item 20, I mean, 18 and 20? Those are the two that we're pulling?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item 10.
Item 10. All right, city manager is pulled until June the 11th, items five and seven. Items number 10, 18, and 20 will be pulled for some discussion. Anybody else have any other items they want to pull?
Mayor, just one other point for me. We have to, we have to read into the record a correction on item number four. The agreement that's attached had a typo in there, so we just want to read...
All right, so let's pull four then?
Yeah, right, thank you.
All right, so, and Paul, help me here on the, make sure I get the right ones. Then I'll entertain a motion for the approval of items three, five, eight...
No, six.
Three, six.
Huh?
Six is being, five is being pulled.
Oh, that's right, okay. Three... Three, six, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Correct.
Is there a motion for those passages?
Second.
There's a motion, second, on all those items. All, any, any comment from the public or the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Okay, we'll go back to item number four. And who's gonna handle that one? Okay.
Mayor and council, Pat Eldridge with the Police Department. I believe you have a new interlocal cooperation agreement that is being distributed. We found a typo in the second paragraph, and that has been removed, and this is the new interlocal agreement.
Okay, so it's, it's just a typo you're taking?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And since that was a typo in the agreement and not in the resolution, we can just pass it as it stands. It does not have to be amended.
Do approve?
Second.
All right, that's item four. Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The, the agreement has been corrected, but the resolution's okay. Is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding. Is that correct legal?
All right, all the bobbleheads are going like this, so we're in good shape. All right, so I'll entertain a motion on item four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Speaking of that, um, where'd Ms. Eldridge go? And I probably shouldn't be, that, this is just kind of housekeeping stuff. Would you be kind enough maybe to set a time, uh, that we could get together with our new city manager and the new county judge and myself to go into the, kind of an educational process for those two and myself as well, on the MetroCom, kind of its history and where we are on that and that sort of thing?
Yes, sir.
And bring whatever, if we've had any audits over the last several years or something. It, it kind of came as a surprise to me last year when, after I got in the mayor's seat, I got a call from the county judge that said, we'd like for you to come to our metro board meeting. And I said, well, do I have to be there? And he said, uh, yep, it's you and me, we're the board. And so I said, oh, I mean, I'd never knew that before. So, with a new county judge and a new city manager, and a guy that just found out he was one of the two members of the board, I'd really like to get with us to make every, make sure we're all aboard because that MetroCom is a significant part of our public safety, and everybody needs to be on board. And, and I don't know where we are in terms of audits and things, but if you could just, well, set a time, and would be convenient if you could set that up between the county judge and the city manager and myself, that'd be great. All right, thank you very much. Uh, item number six?
Five?
I mean, five.
Five and seven were pulled, that's item number ten.
All right, till six, eleven, all right. I'm down to ten. Who wanted that one?
I did.
Okay.
Okay, looking at, uh, at how this is, is written, it's, it's requesting for thirty million dollars over a period of, of three years with a renewal, so ta- for ten million per year with renewal by the city manager. I'd like to make a motion to change that to approval by, by city council, since, uh, engineering does not go through the purchasing department for oversight. I believe, uh, until that policy is changed or, or, or done, we should be responsible for that amount of money, um, with regards to this, uh, this, this amount of money being spent.
And so, Mr. Manager, are, what are folks, I mean, in terms of processing projects, what does that do to that, if anything, or is this?
I, I can't speak for engineering. Um, Valerie's here and certainly could speak, um, to that, uh, topic better than I could. By the way, Dan Grimsell, Executive Director of Water Utilities.
Councilman, um, I guess I heard you say that, uh, because engineering doesn't go through purchasing, engineering does not go through purchasing, both engineering and purchasing do, do the procurements for the city of Corpus Christi. So, we do bid it out, we do evaluate the bids, and we do take the bids to council for approval. We don't go through the purchasing department as far as that goes. So, I'm not quite sure what the request is.
I guess what I'm concerned about here is it's an awful lot of money to be spending over time, and I just want to have visibility to it and have reports back on the IDIQ program. So, more, just to make sure that we're following along. I don't want to have what happened with the, uh, the pipe cleaning issue where we, we end up having to ratify payments, uh, to a different, uh, because it was, it was contracted to a different company that wasn't authorized at the time. So, just in terms of keeping an eye on this, this amount of money, I mean, we're talking thirty million dollars here. Just want to make sure we have a good, clear understanding of how it's being spent, uh, through this program.
In response to that, I believe a memo went out as far as explaining the IDIQ program, the indefinite, delivery indefinite quantity.
Uh, I understand. I did, I did go through it.
As far as that goes, part of what the administration is, it takes place with, within the department that is working towards issue the deals, as well as the process for paying the contractor. So, it is twofold in watching the funding and making sure that you don't overspend the amount that you have budgeted for each of the years. But yes, ten million is a lot, and one of the things that, uh, I guess the utilities department is doing is using this wastewater IDIQ in the way of cleaning their existing infrastructure, and it, and it is quite a bit. I think the purpose of the three years is because they didn't want to come back each and every time, because the actual cost of the work to be done is quite high as far as how fast they can move through ten million dollars.
Okay, now, this is
This is for
maybe, this is for replacement, right?
Right, this is.
This is not, this is not cleaning, this is replacement.
This is pipe bursting. I would have made that clarification.
Pipe bursting is not cleaning, and, um, what, okay, there's many different ones. Pipe bursting is replacing a pipe. If you cannot clean it, then you have to lay a new line. The next thing in, uh, uh, I guess, more economical way of laying an entire new line is to do pipe bursting, which is trying to go through the existing line and putting a new sleeve in and having a new pipe in place. But this IDIQ, as big as it is, is all a part of what the utilities are doing in the way of the SSOs that they are working to improve as far as, um, updating their infrastructure as far as wastewater lines or
Okay, so what is your concern without, with, about having to come back to city council for reporting and approval?
I don't believe I have a concern with that. I think what I heard you say was, because we don't go through the purchasing department, and I think that's the only thing I was making a comment on.
Okay. And based on the conversation from the last, from last week, it was more, there was more to it, but this is just in part, as far as getting this through, like to have visibility to it. And since it is a lot of money.
We certainly can get a report to, that we can bring back, and between the department and engineering, on how much was spent and how much was done, we can get a report back to council if that's what the council would like.
Ms. Wardo?
Well, I was going to, um, uh, mention what you, what, what you're talking about now, and I think it would behoove the council to have a report annually prior to the renewal as to not only maybe the money spent, or how the projects are going, I should say, because the money, we know where the money's gonna be spent, but how those projects are going, but also on the performance of the contractor. Because I think that's the other, um, item of importance, if you will. But, um, Mr. Zanoni, if that can be done again prior to, you know, that, that next ten million being spent, um, if the other issue's been addressed that Councilman Hernandez is mentioning, then I think the update is, is, is what we have a little bit of concern with, in knowing thirty million dollars is, is going out the door. But if we know how that is going, especially with the contractor, as you know, because we, we get those, you know, we end up getting, I guess, part of that issue if, if there is one. So, I think that would be, um, probably, uh, an advantage to us all.
Ms. Guard, you, you're absolutely right. We do, in the process of doing the contract, have to evaluate how the contractor is doing, how it's working and how much they've done. I think what the department has done in the process is pretty much mapped out where the work is being done, and that is what they have more visible at, in, instead of like the cost and how much is done by each of these years. And that is something we could really work on a report that we can give at the end of, of each year, for sure. Prior to the, the following year, yes.
Okay, I don't see anybody else. So, I have a motion for, uh, item ten approval. Your second?
I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it amended.
I made, I made a motion to amend with
To what you proposed, I mean, I think that
Well, I mean, the amendment is to get the reports in, I mean, just brief some updates or whatever.
It's not in the resolution.
Well, the, the, the actual amendment I made was to get, uh, city council approval for the next, for, on an annual basis.
But I think what we're talking about is
But you had, you had mentioned review. Okay, but I'd actually amended that. I, I actually made the motion to amend it for city council approval, not, uh, uh, not just review report. So, if it doesn't, if it doesn't get seconded, we can go with that and make a motion, a second motion to make sure that we get, uh, a, a report annually, or I think actually should be more often than that. But I'll, I'll, what I'll do is I'll, I'll change my motion to approve, um, this three with report. I would prefer more than annually, semi-annually, on the IDIQ program with approval, um, for city manager.
And the contractor performance.
All right, so the, you're changing your motion to get a semi-annual report on expenditures and how we're moving?
Correct.
Yeah. Information, I think, is good, but I'd, I'd sure hate to impede the progress or some, I mean, some of these projects may come up.
And just a
You've got to make a decision overnight. In some of these cases, might be that you just don't have time a lot of times.
And, and a port, point of, a point of clarification is, who's actually doing the contract ma- um, monitoring? Who's contract management on this?
Okay, Dan, a lot of it is done, go ahead.
So, we, we, it's, it's Engineering Services, and they have a person, her name's Sandra, that watches over the IDIQ contracts as a whole. But Engineering Services or Development or, uh, Utilities, I was at Development Services for a little while. Utilities, we develop the, what we call delivery orders to provide Engineering Services to know what's the next, the next one we'll be doing. So, every project that we come up, we have a delivery order that we provide this contractor, because that's how it works on an IDIQ contractor. And in that delivery order, it'll give the specs and, um, the location and, and what we're requiring, size of the line. Um, it'll be stamped by our engineer. And the reason we're doing that is, we're doing that in-house to save costs. Um, I'm gonna give credit to, to Mark Van Black on this one. Basically, we're connecting two points, if you want to say, between two manholes. And it doesn't take a whole lot of design to do that. And we have very capable in-house staff to create those designs, create these delivery orders, provide them to, uh, Engineering Services, who then move forward with the contractor because they interface with the contractor. Uh, we can't give them direction. Um, they manage the contractor. We provide the delivery orders. We help Engineering Services look at what's being done and provide feedback, but they actually interface with the contractor because they're the contract managers.
We, we provide the, engineering provides the inspections on it. So, once a delivery order is done, given to the contractor, the inspectors in engineering will inspect the job, make sure it's done in accordance to the delivery order, and then the payment is processed through the engineering department.
All right.
All right, so a motion on the floor is to get us six-month reports on the expenditures and progress on the things, but they don't have to come back for any more approvals because we've got to keep the projects working.
Right, and it will be, it will be a joint effort.
But that's acceptable, and also, please include how it affects SSOs and, and INI to the wastewater
Rudy agrees with that?
The entire system, yeah.
All right, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, then, uh, the next one?
We need to approve it as amended.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
All right, number eighteen, somebody want to pull number eighteen? Yes, sir. Come here.
Good afternoon, council. Uh, my name's David Newstead, six zero nine Grant Place. Um, here today speaking, uh, also in my capacity as the Conservation Chair for Coastal Bend Audubon Society, uh, specific to item eighteen. Um, I want to also welcome the city manager stepping out. Um, as, as he likely knows, and you all know, this area is of tremendous importance for its natural resources. It's a major economic engine, uh, for the area. Incredible, uh, water fowling and, uh, and recreational fishing opportunities here. Um, and it's a, it's a critical part of our, uh, of the coastal bend. Um, item eighteen, the, uh, it pertains to a, uh, a regional parkway project that is actually in two components, in, in two segments, I believe, referred to as A and B. Uh, one of those, uh, extends from Crosstown to Rodfield and includes the Rodfield Flyover. And, um, as far as that one goes, I know, uh, Councilman Hernandez brought up this point last week. I don't know that you can act fast enough on that one. There's a lot of growth going on out there. Uh, understandable that, um, that things need to be done, and I hope that's done. I trust it'll be done as, uh, as wisely and progressively as possible. Um, a particular concern to us is, uh, the, the other segment which cross, which extends from Rodfield and then crosses the King Ranch, uh, the Laguna Madre, and, uh, and on to North Padre Island. Um, and by the way, these, uh, during the MPO's process, uh, scoping process, or not sure what the process, uh, was called, these concerns were brought up, uh, by ours, by ourselves and others. Um, so, in particular, as the, as this, uh, rural arterial, rural arterial crosses Laguna Madre, it crosses some of the best fishing and waterfowl grounds anywhere around here. Um, and, uh, there, there are many people who, who will attest to that. Where that particular project, uh, where that particular, uh, parkway is projected to land is actually on a, uh, is on property owned by Noises County in Claybrook County. Uh, I'll get to that in a minute, but as a previous commenter had mentioned, uh, that is straight through the, straight through the middle of one of the most important critical habitat units for several shorebird species around here. And it's the only habitat like that in, in the area. You have to go very far south or, or north to find anything, anything similar. And, uh, the proposed route goes right dead through the middle of, of, uh, what's called Nighthawk Bay and Nighthawk Flat. Um, beyond that, a, a four-lane highway or parkway, or whatever it's being called, is, uh, essentially on a fragment native prairie on that, on that property. Um, and that's one of the most significantly declining habitats in, in the area. Can I continue?
Yes, sir. All right, anyone else on this? We appreciate your comments, thank you. This is, this project is gonna be, this portion of it's probably gonna be, I'm gonna be looking on the other side of grass by the time this thing happens. But, but anyway, but let me just say, I was, I was on the commissioner's court when the county acquired that piece of property, and there is provisions for roads and parking and camping and use of that for people to get out in nature. It's not there to be secluded and keep people off of that property. And a roadway is highly acceptable. It's in the deed restrictions that we bought from the GLO. Some people said they want to use that property for development. There's to be no development on that property, and that's part of the, also the restrictions from the GLO. So, you're gonna hear a lot of sa- comments made on both sides as this project moves forward, but go get the deed restrictions because the intent is to provide that area for the public, but there are provisions for campsites or picnic sites or roadways to get in there so people can enjoy it. But there will never be a high-rise apartment or condominiums or anything else built on that. It just ain't gonna happen. We made that clear when we purchased the property from the GLO. So, that area is gonna be protected, but there is approval for getting through there. And it's in a lot better condition than it is today in the hands of the county than it was in the hands of the GLO, because if you've been out there when the G, the reason the GLO wanted to get rid of it, or get somebody that could take care of it, they had nobody down here to maintain it. They had shooting ranges out there, there's dumping grounds out there, and that, to my knowledge, has been cleaned up by Scott Parks and Commissioner Chesney, uh, to the point that it's, it's a beautiful piece of property, and the county is committed to maintaining it, but they've also got the right to make it available for people to get out and actually see it. So, but this roadway is probably not gonna happen in our lifetime. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, um.
But you got to get it in the plans, excuse me.
In our discussion last week on this, this is an ongoing process, and the heavy environmental lifting is, is coming up. So, we, that is kind of the next step. And I, and I forgot it was twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three that that takes place. And, and all the, uh, issues that he brought up, they will be then evaluated in depth. And all the issues that he brought up, they will be then evaluated in depth. And a little bit of comment on the property. The landing for it right now does call for going into Noasis County lands, but it's adjacent to private lands on there. And that landowner, at some point in time, may be willing to allow the right-of-way, or we could do it by combination also. But it's right on the borderline of this tract the mayor just referenced. And that tract was bought from private ownership by Highway Beautification Funds. So in that, in how that title went. The Highway Department, at one time, they funded that property. But I think it's real important for us, as a council, this is something that's going to affect generations ahead. And like the mayor said, we'll probably be looking at grass above us, but future generations securing right-of-ways or having some planning going along with this on what we're going to do. And the island's going to grow. You know, that's just a fact on there. And for us to ignore it with it, with poor planning, I think is a bad thing to do. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, just to reiterate the point that our citizen here gave, that the Rodfield extension is also very important, considering the Delmar campus being built there. And we should really do this simultaneously. I'm not sure why it wasn't given on this presentation as well. But I think that, for the citizens in that area, unless you're going to Flower Bluff, there's only three ways to get out of there: Yorktown, Rodfield, and combination of Cimarron and Airline, that end up in Airline anyway. So if we don't plan now, if we don't push this forward, Delmar has really created a situation where we're going to have a lot of traffic in that area. And if you're seeing that area now, where we're doing work on it now, we still, we need to work on it. And so if, as a priority for the council, I think it should be also just as important to get that Rodfield extension as this corridor as well. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rizikin, for, I'm going to ask you this as a point of clarification due to a citizen coming up and speaking earlier during public comment. But isn't the, this project as a state project? Is that correct?
It's a text dot.
Text dot, correct. Just making sure. Thank you.
Annika Yankee with Planning Department. It is a, this is the MPO who's funding the planning, but it would be, the goal would be that it'd be a state highway, yes.
Yeah. All right, any other comment on item 18? And then taking a motion to approve 18?
So I move.
Second.
Motion second on item 18. Any other comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, then we pulled number 20. Who was wanting that one? All right, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr... This is the water garden on there, and we discussed this pretty well ad nauseam. We, for those that aren't aware, we just, I had a workshop, and we discussed it there. In that workshop, that it's been determined by our legal eagles that this is, Water Garden is a seawall. They know the law. We don't. But they said that we can use seawall money for this. Another part of that discussion, well, if the water gardens is a seawall, then the museum's a seawall. So yep, they said, yep, we can spend money for the museum too, on there. And with the bridge coming down, maybe we put a D-SAL plant at bridge location. So I guess we could call that a seawall and spend it there too. But we haven't heard that determination. I see Mr. Ridley kind of knocking on that one. But my concern with this is, we've got a feature there, the pumps, they've worked for 30 years. Now, there was an original design flaw when they built that. And they had a vault, and in that vault, it was at grade. In other words, it was at grass level. And guess what? When it rains, if you have something that's not above the ground, it floods with it. And then over time, it's created a little, the dirt's moved a little bit, created a little bit of a doughnut, so it floods even more. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars replacing equipment in there. Why? Because of this design flaw that floods. We never fixed it. Raise a lip three inches, it won't flood. Put a grate around it, it won't flood. Now we're talking about spending over a million dollars, I don't know how much the relocation of the vault would be, on it as compared to bringing it back up to standards for a couple of hundred thousand dollars, which FEMA has indicated that they will foot the bill for. That's what we were told before. So 100%, we need to get that water garden back going on there. I'm not in any shape, form, or fashion saying that we shouldn't do anything. It's just my concern that we can do this. We can do it, save the taxpayers a pretty good chunk of money. We really wouldn't need the seawall funds to do it. So that's, I just wanted to bring that up. And Mr. Line Decker's there, he's just a great engineer. There's nothing in here saying that the quality of engineering wouldn't be right, but to me, it's not an effective use of our taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
For clarification, I would think any of the FEMA money would go to this to keep the taxpayer portion of it down as much as possible. Is that correct?
Valerie Gray, Executive Director of Public Works. I just want to mention Jeff would be here, but he's riding in a bicycle race. Anyway, you are, he, he's in a bicycle race, 100 and something miles, yes.
That explains those pipes in the middle of sidewalks, then. Okay, go ahead.
Councilman Smith, you're absolutely right. This water garden dates back to 1984. It did flood in three years that we know of, pretty bad, '07, '11, and then with Harvey. And it was because that underground vault did flood out. And I know that several things were done over time to put pumps, to try to pump it out, try to keep it from flooding, but I would say that was a design flaw. This job that's in place, the FEMA funds that was received to record shows that it's $29,794. With the water garden being 184, this appears to be the most substantial money that's put into refurbishing this. What's going to happen to bring this above ground, to prevent it from ever happening again, as far as the vault flooding out, we're going to be pretty much rebuilding a small pump station above ground, where we were going to have new lights that are going to need to be refurbished. We're going to refurbish the water garden as well at the same time. So it's more than just fixing it back in the existing spot, in the existing state, because the three times that it did flood, I believe it was all due to the fact that it was underground. This project is separate from the water feature that is on Shoreline. It is also included as a part of this item. But yes, the approximate cost for the construction of what we're doing is about 1.2 million at the water garden. The one at the water feature on Shoreline is about $400,000. That is the construction cost. What he will be designing is to get both of those features back up to working order and operational, hopefully, by next year. I don't know if that answers your question.
And it also is the three wind directors that tell you which way the wind's going. If you go down there now, they're blowing in three different directions. I've never seen windometers that point in three different directions at the same time the wind's blowing. But we got one. That was a special trick on that art design, is how you get three wind direction things to go in three different directions when the winds all come from the same place. But we ought to charge extra for that if we go down there. Okay, any other discussion on item number 20? WD-40 might get them all working a little bit. All right, number one, Mr. Barrera.
Okay, so we're just basically approving the Engineering Services.
You are approving, yes, sir.
Approving the Engineering Services, so that way LNV Engineering can review either other alternatives or the alternative that we have, understanding that right now, the budget of construction is the 1.2 and the 400,000.
Yes, sir. What is before you today is the professional service contract with LNV Engineering to complete the design for totally getting the water garden up to work-in-order, and as well as the water feature down on Shoreline.
Exactly.
Once he's completed his work, we will come back, well, we'll bid it out, and then we'll come back to council with the award of the contract. Is that correct, Dan? And then with that, we anticipate now, we were saying, if we had moved ahead with this, we were going to have him back working around the first of 2020. Now it's going to push it a little bit more, and we're really working to get it before the summer of 2020.
Now, and then you had indicated that the FEMA monies that are available were in the amount of 29,000 and some change.
794, yes, sir. We received FEMA funds of 29,794, correct, in finance.
So once again, it's an asset that's 30 years old. It's an amenity that's exclusive to Corpus Christi. I know a former council member and policymaker right now floated around on Facebook what they used to look like, and people were going back there thinking they were fixed. So we have an obligation to the community to obviously repair it and get it back in work-in-order. A 30-year asset. And so right now, once again, we're just approving professional services, so that way we can move in that direction.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And that water feature on Shoreline you referred to, most people probably don't, is, the common language is, it's a diaper pool.
I wasn't going to call it by that, no.
We want to keep people from putting diapers in the thing.
Exactly. They have a real nice, they have a real nice diaper pool in Houston, in downtown Houston.
Okay, item number four. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. And to Councilman Barrera's, I'm fully supportive of getting this thing fixed. I said so a couple of years ago. Now, when we had a presentation before to go ahead and completely upgrade it, new electrical equipment in there, one new pump, recondition the other pump, my memory is right, that was $213,000?
I believe that's what they brought to you when they had bid it out.
Scott Electric said, we can get this thing back going, back pumping water for $200,000. So what we're hearing today, we're hearing a $300,000 engineering contract, another $150,000 in engineering charges associated with that to do a 1.2 million. So I want it back for 30 years. I think what we saw was bringing it back for 30 years with it, in the memory of Patsy and Eddie Singer. I want that thing back with it. So to me, it's just a question of how much tax dollars. I think all nine of us want it back. There's no doubt about it. It's just how much we spend on getting it back. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve?
All right, there's a motion and a second.
Mayor, I, oh, sorry. Just wanted to make one more comment on this. And to the point of where Councilman Barretta was talking about, and Councilman Smith about getting it up and running through a contract with Scott Electric, that is completely gone. We are not going to have it up and running during the timeframe of design and rebuilding. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. We will not have it running by this summer, which is what they were projecting to have it back and running.
And there's a reason why we didn't want to pursue that at all?
Again, if I remember correctly, that was an attempt to try to get it back up and running. It wasn't to improve it or to collect, to correct what the design flaw was. And at the same parallel time to getting it up and running, to have it back running for summer, you had the parallel track of Park and Rec trying to get it done through Engineering Services to correct the design era and to fix it and upgrade it, so it can last another 30 years.
Okay, so...
That is not going to be done.
That being said, when this came back up the second time, when we voted it down, Jeff Edmonds stood there and said that they were going to amend this contract to include some aspect of getting it up and running.
They did. They did, working with them to get in touch with FEMA, fill out the correct paperwork, so that the 29,000 would be applied to this job and included in it. I don't know if you want to...
Wait a minute, that's not what I understood he said. What I understood he said is it would be a component to get it up and running while this is being designed. So maybe I misunderstood what he said, but if that was the case, I mean, then...
That was several weeks ago.
Well, that was a long time ago. It was over a month ago.
I think we've passed the window of getting it up and running for the summertime.
Yes, we passed that window.
Okay.
To do it on emergency basis.
I just want to ask you.
All right, so if this is the case, we're not going to get it, we're not, just so citizens know, that we are not getting it up and running this year.
You are correct.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, so keep your diapers dry for another year. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Aye.
All right, you want to call the roll, please? Well, I know we want the record to be accurate. Call the roll, please.
Mayor McComb.
Aye.
Councilmembers Roy.
Aye.
Smith.
No.
Barrera.
Aye.
Garza.
No.
Cuajardo.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
Hunter.
Aye.
Molina.
Aye.
The ordinance passes on second reading.
Thank you.
All right, that was item 20, so that gets us through the consent agenda, right?
Correct.
All right, well, we're going to take our 1:30 lunch break. And hold on, I've got to read the right language, because we're going into that. Where's the right language here, Paul?
It is on...
Page three?
Page, no.
Page 11, 36.
No, hold on here.
Page eight. M.
Page eight?
Yes.
Okay, the council will go into executive session on item 36. And that's the only one?
Yes.
Per the Texas Government Code, section 551.071 and 551.087. And we'll try to be back 245-ish, plus or minus, probably heavy on the plus. And we'll try to be back 245-ish, plus or minus, probably heavy on the plus. You slept real good last night, didn't you?
Getting a little bit more sleep. You're right, Mayor. I never loved anybody as much as I love Peter. But, but Mayor, coming out of executive session, we have passed out now a resolution to you. And it's Resolution Authorizing Amendment Number One and Joiner of Chapter 38 Economic Development Agreement between the City of Corpus Christi, Texas and Corpus Christi Liquifaction LLC relating to the development of the property in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. This is the Cheniere tract. And we received this last week, have run it through the checks and balances. And coming out of executive session, we would ask that you approve this resolution.
Move to approve.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All right. Mr. Hernandez.
Sorry, Mayor. I had that on.
All right. There's a motion and a second on that resolution. Any comments?
Mayor, I would, I think we handed this out. So, I think we need to specify that there would be a move to approve Resolution Authorizing Amendment Number One and Joiner to Chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement between the City of Corpus Christi, Texas and Corpus Christi Liquifaction LLC relating to the development of property in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction.
All right.
Yeah, that's what I just read.
And that's the motion?
Yes, sir. And Councilmember Molina.
That's what I said. Yes.
All right. So, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? We discussed it, or had explained to us out there. And that's why I say this is a lot of legal making sure we're doing it right. See no buttons lit? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mayor, if the council would indulge us, we could move to items 32, 33, and 34 at this time.
All right. And 32, 33, and 34, that's over on, under a regular agenda items. And I think there's a gentleman here that... Not right now. I don't think you'd be... But we're going to go to 32, 33, and 34. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And you'll be given an opportunity to speak when we get there. We're just, we're moving ahead of the agenda. So, I just wanted to make sure. I didn't, I didn't mean to interrupt your nap back there waiting on us. Okay. We're going to go to 32 first?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, this is a, this is an item that's creating and is creating three new industrial districts, industrial districts five, six, and seven. And we have handed out a substitute industrial district ordinance to... And the reason we've handed this out is in order to make sure that we account for the 1,000-foot minimum width. We have a little concern there. So, we needed to amend it a little bit. And that's what the substituted ordinance does. It allows for that 1,000-foot width that we're required to provide for under the statute. It reduces the size of industrial district number six a little bit. So, with that, Mayor, staff's recommendation is that the city council move to approve the substituted industrial district ordinance as handed out to city council to create industrial districts five, six, and seven.
All right. And this on item Agenda 32?
Yes, sir. And the industrial districts are here in the presentation.
All right. Is there a motion on this, a motion to substitute?
Can I move?
Is there a second? All right. There's a motion on item 32 to, for this substitution. Any public comment on this? Seeing none? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. What number did you want to make sure you got on?
34, please.
34. Okay. So, then the next one then, Mr. Selman?
Mayor, the next item is item number 33. This is the La Quinta Corridor Annexation Ordinance. And in the visual here, you can see that there is one property excluded from the annexation. And that property is under an ag agreement. So, staff's recommendation is to approve the ordinance as presented. That is a move to approve the La Quinta Corridor Annexation Ordinance.
Can I move?
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion either by the council or the public on item 33?
We might want to specify declaring an emergency.
What? And the declaration of an emergency on that, Mayor. As part of the motion.
Okay. Motion to declare an emergency and then move forward to approve the La Quinta Corridor Annexation Ordinance?
My motion includes a declaration of emergency, Paul.
Very well.
All right. Any discussion, either public or in the council? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. 34 is the one you were interested in. All right. We'll see what the changes are. And that may address what you have. If not, we'll have you come up and speak during the comment period.
Mayor, this particular ordinance does have quite a few amendments to it. And in the visual that we have presented here, this identifies the properties to be excluded from the annexation area. Very similar to every, everything that you just did is now represented in this. Item, what you did out of executive session excluded this tract. What you did in item 32 excluded this tract, this tract, and this tract, those in blue. And, and now included in this ordinance is the exception for these agricultural areas here and here. They're under an ag exemption. So, with that, staff does recommend, and we've handed out a revised ordinance. And it's a substituted ordinance. And this includes the meets and bounds, the key here is the meets and bounds of the annexed area in the exhibit. Includes a map as Exhibit B to match the finalized meets and bounds. It also reduces the area of the industrial district six, again, things that you just did in previous action, and modifies the annexed area to exclude the areas subject to the agreement with Cheniere, which you also just did. So, it really speaks to these amendments that you see to this ordinance are being reflected by your previous actions. And again, staff's recommendation is to move to declare the emergency and to approve the substituted ordinance as handed out to city council.
All right. Is there a motion?
Public hearing?
Is it a public hearing? No, just, it's a non-reading ordinance. But we will ask for public comment, but we need a motion first.
A motion to approve as amended.
Recommended. Okay. Is there a second for the recommended?
With the declaration.
As substituted.
Is there a second? All right. There's a motion and a second on item 34. And now, we come up, and I don't know whether, what we just had explained to you addresses what you're concerned about, or you might need some clarification.
I still would like to address the council.
Come ahead.
My name is Andrew Otis. I reside, for the record, at 37 Abington Avenue in Ardsley, New York. I represent Corpus Christi Illumina. Corpus Christi Illumina owns 408 acres of property next to the Cheniere property. And, yeah, thank you. And has, and as some of you may know, is under contract to be sold to Cheniere. We are in the process of remediating the site. And under the terms of the agreement, we'll sell the site to Cheniere according to the contract provisions. We have entered into a, we have executed a development agreement with the City of Corpus Christi. And we would like to include this 408 parcel, along with the other parcels that you just approved, to be excluded from the annexation and excluded from this annexation ordinance today. That's the extent of my remarks. Happy to answer any questions if appropriate.
All right. So, this is, we're getting into legal territory. And none of us around the table are lawyers. So, we'd like to ask our legal people to look at this. We don't want to do anything to jeopardize you or us.
Yeah. We had, we had indicated a deadline of Monday before yesterday to, to get back the documents. And there's actually several entities that did not get the documents back in accordance with the deadline. And the reason we have established the deadline was we need to make sure that that paperwork is correct and flanges in well with that annexation ordinance. So, our intent is, within the next month and a half, to come back with a series of disannexations that will disannex territory owned by Camorres, Oxy, and, and this area. But we're not quite ready to recommend that they would be excluded from the annexation yet. Because this is, this is the kind of thing where, since the legislature is in the process of taking our authority to annex away, we want to make absolutely sure that we're correct before we do that, before we exclude territory from the annexation.
Mayor, let me, let me paraphrase what Miles just said. What we will look to do, we'll go through the paperwork submitted by the folks that have come in. We find them in order. Staff will come forward with an affirmative recommendation to disannex properties that we get into these agreements with.
If I have a few minutes?
We'll bring the agreements forward and recommend disannexation.
Okay.
If I have, if I have any more time?
Yes, sir. Go ahead. We want to get it right.
A couple of things. One is, I want to thank the legal team for their effort in the face of incredible demand. There was a lot of legal work to do in a very short period of time. And I certainly commend the work that they did to try to get as much of it done as possible. Second is that, you know, we believe that annexing and then disannexing this property is a lot of effort when there is in existence a signed development agreement. We understand that the legal team needs to review it. But it's an agreement that we've reached agreement with the legal team on. It reflects their concerns. We think it would be in our interest, in the city's interest, and in Cheniere's interest to try to avoid annexation, if at all possible. We appreciate the commitment of the city to try to disannex this property at some time, in the near future, hopefully, and fully understand that commitment. But our view is that if we could avoid annexation in the first place, that would be more efficient. Thank you.
We appreciate your comment and concern, and we want to be responsive to it. I think what we've got to do, you're actually 10 days too early. The legislature is still in session. We have no, and if you're from New York, I don't want to ask you about your politics up there. But down here in Texas, as long as the legislature is meeting, nobody's safe. And so, we want to make sure we're doing what we've got the authority to do now and are wanting to work to make it happen to what you want to do. But we want to make sure our ducks are in a row. So, I think that's, we're trying to come to a balance. I agree. But we've, under some issues that are taking place, the legislature, failure to act could be very detrimental to what our goal, and I think your goal would be ultimately. So, we appreciate your comments, and I think they'll continue to work with you to try to achieve what you're trying to get done on that. Is that, was that a fair assessment?
I think that that's exactly a fair assessment. And I did leave out one. We're also working with Vestalpina that will be the subject of that disannexation that we're working on as well, the La Quinta Corridor.
Okay. Yeah. We're just trying to cover all our flanks with the uncertainty of what will or won't be finalized in the next few days. Do you have a crystal ball that you might know something about? No insight into information? Okay. All right, then. And there's a motion. Did you make that motion?
Yeah.
As the, it's an emergency motion, like the other?
It's an emergency motion.
All right. There's a motion and a second that we move forward with this. But with the understanding, we'll work with them to try to help meet their and accommodate their request in a timely manner. So, the impact is not felt on them.
Correct.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. 32, 33, and 34.
Mayor, coming out of executive session, we also have one more item.
All right.
We might have an opportunity. We've just put up on the overhead. We are currently in negotiations with... All right. We are in negotiations with Gregory on a session agreement. And we will be meeting with them this week. But this is a property that we believe will present itself as an opportunity. And it's our recommendation at this time that the city council provide direction coming out of executive session and pursuant to the, to the posting of the executive session, move to approve the resolution that we're handing out declaring the city's intent to begin the annexation of up to 326 acres of land into territorial limits of the City of Corpus Christi, directing the city manager to prepare a service plan for the annexation of municipal services to the proposed annexation area.
All right. Is there a motion? Somebody want to move? So, move?
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. And this is just starting the process.
Just starting the process, Mayor.
We've completed our work with Portland.
Yes, sir.
And we're working with Gregory.
We're negotiating with Gregory.
And we're working with Ingleside.
Yes, sir. Have a meeting with them scheduled as well.
And we're still open to, with the Randus pass, if...
If they so choose.
If they so choose. I mean, we're trying to accommodate as many people as we can with the hand that's dealt us and the time allotment. So, entertain a motion on this resolution. And this is, is this an emergency resolution?
This is a, yes, it's a resolution, Mayor. Yep. Coming out of executive session.
All right. This is out of the executive session.
Yeah. We have a motion by Councilmember Garza, seconded by Councilmember Molina.
Okay. I'm sorry. Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And let me, I don't think that we can thank Mr. Selman and the staff for getting this done. There's a lot of legal work went into this. I'm sure there was some intense negotiation, as well as some, you know, just regular normal. But we found ourselves in a situation, we wanting to try to help our neighbors, accomplish some of their goals. And they started a clock on us, which we don't, we didn't have prior to this legislative session. And so, if we can get it all done within the next few days, or really today's the last day, we've got a chance to do it.
Yes, sir.
Then I think the communities surrounding Corpus Christi and Corpus Christi are going to be better suited for the future than they were before we started this process. So, I want to commend you and the staff.
Mayor, the planning team, the legal team, they carried a lot of water on this, no doubt.
And there may be still some negotiations going up.
Yes, sir.
Till after the first of the month. But I think we've got it in place to where we can continue those negotiations even after the legislature.
Yes, sir.
Completes its work. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Did we vote on that?
Yes.
We voted right?
Yes.
Okay. So, and thank you for coming down, and I hope this works out for you. And be careful flying back to New York. Come back anytime. Okay. We go back now to...
The next item would be the future agenda on bottom of page seven.
All right. Future agenda, item 24 through 26. And I think, Ms. Valerie, you have a presentation you want to make on 24? All right. There's no action on, for the public, there's no action on items 24, 25, or 26. This is for information only. Okay.
Valerie Gray, Executive Director of Public Works, Mayor and Council. This presentation I will make really covers items 24 and 25. I would make really covers items 24 and 25. 25 is, goes hand in hand with this one, but I've got a presentation that updates you, and I'll try to get through it pretty quick. Today, well, I'd like to introduce you first, Albert Quintanilla, the Director of Street Operations, and Ms. Sarah Munoz is the Assistant Director of Planning for Street Ops. Today, I will present to you an update on the Street Preventative Maintenance Program, or what's known as the SPMP, and the 2019 Work Plan for City Council Approval. As a reminder, and to some of you, and to some of you, this is new, and that's why we want to review it, in 2012, Street Operations worked to develop a comprehensive plan or strategy to begin aggressively addressing and improving streets. It is known today as the Street Improvement Plan, and it's recognized by the four-colored pie that you see here on the left-hand side of this slide, and with an issue as big as street, aging street infrastructure, and to try to stop, stop the rapid progression of street deterioration that we were having, the city focused on maintenance, which is represented by the orange quadrant that you see here on the page, and they adopted a street life cycle maintenance of treatments and developed a proactive program to improve street maintenance in order to keep streets that were good or, or in good shape, to keep them, keep them at good and keep them from falling into a more deteriorated state. That program was developed, it's approximately $15.3 million a year, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that. We, we knew that we were trying to keep good streets in good condition because we knew it was less costly to maintain a street than to rebuild it totally and let it totally deteriorate. So in 2013, the street maintenance fee was developed, and many of you are aware of the street maintenance fee we collected monthly from our citizens, and it was successfully implemented in January of 2014. The fee funded in part the implementation of the $15.3 million a year program, which also began in 2014. So we started the collection of the fee, and we started the Street Preventative Maintenance Program in the same year of 2014. The SPMP allows the application of overlay and seal coat treatments. That was the original purpose to streets of all classifications, and that's something I say constantly because some people think, well, we're only doing arterials, we're only doing collectors, but we are doing maintenance treatments on all classifications, which is arterials, collectors, and residential streets in order to extend the street life. This is slide number three. Just to review with you, the existing street network is approximately 20 million square yards, or 12,000 miles, with approximately 159 miles of arterials, 211 miles of collectors, and 835 miles of residential or local streets. This slide shows you two pie charts of the street condition by street classification, and I know you've seen one, the one on the left, because I've kind of pulled it out and shown you what the picture looked like in 2014, and then what we have on the right-hand side is where we've updated it recently. And you can see that over the past five years, progress has been made to increase the percentage of streets in good condition. It's close to 10% in each of the arterials and collectors streets, and about 4% for Of course, completion of the bond projects is a big part of what helped move that, that needle of improvement, but it is also the maintenance treatments that's done by the SPMP that has helped the improvement that you see here. Completion of the residential bond projects should move the needle even a little bit more as we continue to develop that residential part, but this is just a snapshot of the condition of streets, and I point out to you again, in green is the, the streets in good condition, and you'll see that as we continued with our bond programs, it kind of advanced the good to a larger size. One thing to point out, you'll still see residential streets in poor condition, only slightly moving, we still have a little bit ways to go, but as we can continue with some of the reconstruction programs that we're going to put in place, we'll hopefully move that along. Street Operations maintains a street condition inventory of all city streets. They use a pavement condition index, or what we call PCI. The PCI method was developed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and is widely used, and it's a method that is based on a survey of the number and types of distresses, and you'll see the distresses on this slide that's found in pavement. The result of an analysis is a numerical value between the numbers of one and, between the numbers of zero and 100, and with 100 representing the best condition and zero representing the worst. PCI values can then be used in the process of identifying which pavement treatments we need to do, such as an overlay or construction on a street. So it's really a first cut. We've discussed that. It's a good, a good way to keep track of it, it's a first cut, we still have to go out visually, take a look at it, and there's other things we need to apply to the process. This chart shows the PCI, let me see if I'm on here, such as always, this chart shows the PCI standard rating scale, I'm so sorry, I'm on the wrong page. This chart shows the PCI standard rating scale with PCI ratings shown on the Y, or vertical axis, and time is along the horizontal axis, representing pavement life. The solid black line represents a street in good condition, and what it means is, over time, with no treatment, at some point, you're going to have a significant drop in the condition of that street, and, and that'll be over a small percentage of the pavement life. The cost for rehab during that period of decline in the pavement condition will escalate costing four to five times more than if we were to try to catch it before it got to that bad condition, which is why pavement should be managed, that's what we say, and not simply just maintain, we should manage when we should get to that, we should be able to take care of the pavement before we reach that point. Most of the street work done by Street Operations is very reactive as they maintain the entire street network. They have very little what we call preventative maintenance, but they do seal coat work, and that is a preventative maintenance treatment. They do approximately 3,000, 3,000, 300,000 square yards a year. With the SPMP program implementation, our overall citywide preventative maintenance has greatly been enhanced, allowing for increased seals and overlays, treatments of streets in good condition, and of all classifications, as I mentioned before. So we're going to be doing work to help extend the life of streets of all street classification, and we were focusing on keeping them in the good condition and preventing them from falling in the need-to-be reconstructed area. This slide shows a five-year summary of the approved work plans to date, and at the completion of the work plans through 2018, 852 streets were projected to be maintained citywide, totaling a little over 400, 4, 4 million square yards, or as, you know, in mileage, we say 272 miles. And all the work is completed except what you see shaded in rows, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit. You'll see those three squares here, I don't know if it's, those shaded in rows, this is what we haven't completed. Okay, let me redo this, all right. This slide shows the current status of the program again. All the overlays and seals are completed through 2016. The contract overlays are completed for 2017, and 31% of the 2018s are on track to be completed. So the contractor, the contract overlays are on track, they're working them, and they're going to complete the 31%. Street Operations, if you notice, the part, the part that they do of seal work, they've completed all their work through 2018. The contract seal coats are behind for both 2017 and 2018. If you look at 2018, they haven't even begun the seals for 2018. So you'll see they, they've only done 42% in 2017 and zero for 2018. Because of this, staff and, and I, we took a look at what was the problems, what was happening that caused us to be behind, and a little bit later, we're going to show you what the problems were and how we propose to catch up and, and handle this, and what we've discovered. So, you'll see that slide again. One important lesson learned as we took a look at the program was this. What we were learning is that seal coat treatment is problematic on high-volume traffic streets like arterials and collectors. And if you remember, the seal coat is the mixture of the emulsion with the small rock. We've been putting those like on the arterials and collectors, but what we're finding is, you know, we were having a hard time as far as the application of it, what the contractor was doing to put it on, but as far as the high-traffic volumes was kicking up the rock, okay? In addition to the sensitivity in the application rates and ensuring adequate mixtures of aggregate and emulsion, what I had mentioned to Council before is, seal coat to me is like an artwork. You got to have the right temperatures, all the stars have to line up, you have to have the right mixture of emulsion and rock, you have to have the right temperatures, can't be wet, everything, and if you don't have it all just right, then you won't have that rock stick the way it should, and so it, it is, it truly is a sensitive application. And with the ever-changing extreme weather conditions that we've had, wet, cold, and hot temperatures, we've experienced, we've experienced inconsistent results by the contracted seals. So the consultants, every time we tried, we were on the second contractor, they've had a problem with the seals. They just can't seem to provide reliable results without a lot of return trips. We've sent them back quite a few times, we're doing some areas where we've had issues, or sweeping up a ton of excess rock, and, I mean, aggregate that has been done. The reduction in the seal performance, either because of the traffic loads, because of the high volumes, or the poor work quality, potentially reduces the expected life cycle because we were expecting a life cycle out of those seals of six, eight years, but if we haven't gotten it just right, you know, we've lost a lot of that life. Slide 10. As a solution to this issue, staff is proposing program changes to the SPMP, which includes no longer performing seal coats on arterials and collectors, or contracting out seals. We're going to continue to do seals, but we're not going to contract the seals out. Instead, on arterials and collectors, we're only going to do overlays or, or and/or what we called ultra-thin bonded wearing course. I know that's long, but we refer to it as ultra-thin. This is very similar to what Tech dot is doing on, what you see on Saratoga, and currently they're doing on Weber. It is similar to an overlay, it's just a thinner coarse overlay, and that is what we're proposing as part of this program to do on arterials and collectors, the higher volumes. Both the overlays and ultra-thins will be contracted. It will not be done in-house, it will be contracted. On residential's or locals, we're going to do either overlays or seal coats. We're not going to do any ultra-thins on residential, but again, the overlays will continue to be contracted by a contractor because they, they get the, the overlays down pat, they're pretty good, but Street Operations is going to perform all the seal coats. And I have to say, Street Operations does the best seal coats I've ever seen because their seal coats look a lot like overlays. They have it down pat, they have the right mixtures, their crews, they've really perfected the way they do a seal coat, and they've done a good job. And so, you know, often people will say, well, if they do the best, why aren't we having them do more? Well, we've decided a way to divide up the program, allow them to do seals on residential streets, and increase a notch on the treatment on overlays, I mean, on collectors and arterials, which are higher-volume streets. Okay, so on this slide, it shows the comparisons of seal to an ultra-thin, just so that you can kind of see the difference. Although it costs a little bit more per square yard, it will provide a longer life, and it will improve the ride quality because you're going to have something that's not as bumpy as, I guess, what the seals are with the rock in it, but you're going to have more of an overlay, and it eliminates the excess rock that's loose on arterials and collectors after you see a seal. I know I got a lot of calls once they did the, the seal on Airline, there were calls that we had to sweep up excess rock. So on the arterials and collectors, we got a high volume, you won't have that rock problem This slide shows the 30-year life cycle of pavement treatments with the change. This is what needs to be done for payments to last 30 years. So our goal is to keep that life cycle, keep those payments last, what we do. Arterial and collector life cycle is on top, you'll see it, with ultra-thin, ultra-thins right around seven and 21 years. We shaded it because it won't be exactly on the seven or 21, it'll be within that limit. And the residential life cycle's on the bottom, it remains the same with seals at seven and 21 years. So this is the change we've altered to the program. This slide shows the pavement condition, condition index target for treatment. The top shows the current program. At the bottom, it shows the program after the changes. For residential, it's going to remain the same, and for arterials and collectors, 65 and above will be candidate PCI targets for ultra-thin. And again, we shaded it, we're going to try to target that area before they drop off into areas where they, they have to be reconstructed, so we're, we're going to really focus on the lower end. This slide, this slide shows the program summary with the changes, and the orange represents the SPMP budget, which includes, well, which includes, let me see, the orange represents the SPMP budget, okay, what it includes, and the green represents Street Operations' operational budget. So if you remember, what we've done is, we've always gone alongside the program because we wanted to have all the candidate streets chosen altogether, but the seals they do is out of their operational budget, SPMP is what you see there in orange. Street Ops will complete all residential seals, which equates to about 10% of the SPMP funding. You can also see, so see the difference, I wanted to point out the thickness in the treatments. If you take a look at the overlays, they're, they're one and a half, they're two-inch thick, the ultra-thins will be anywhere from one-half to three-quarter inch thick, and that is kind of the difference between the ultra-thins and the overlays. Again, this slide is simply a summary of the changes that we've mentioned to you, and so based on the changes, we will complete the 2017 and the 2018 work plans by having the contractor continue the planned overlays for 2018, and we think they're going to do that. We're going to have Street Operation complete all the seals that's scheduled for the residential streets in 2017 and 2018, so they're going to complete whatever seals for residential streets, and then scheduling the arterials and collectors that you have in 17 and 18 for an ultra-thin treatment. We're going to move right away to the ultra-thin. Okay, that is the update of the program with the recommended changes. This next part simply talks to you about approval of the work plan. I wanted to give you that little update and now tell you that in addition to improving, providing you a program update, we're also asking for approval of the resolution to support the 2019 Annual SPMP Citywide Work Plan, which is, it's a list of streets attached to a resolution, and in your packet, it's identified as Exhibit A. It lists all the streets in there that's going to be included for 2019, and for your easy reference, the list is also sorted in alpha order and then by district. Also attaches the list of seals that's going to be done by Street Operations, and there's also a map in there of all the 2019 locations. This slide is what was presented and approved by Council in November of 2013 at the start of the program. It outlines the street selection criteria, or what we call guiding principles, that was approved at that time, and we use that as we develop the work plan each year. It was primarily based on PCI condition, and then it was distributed by the other factors that you see listed here. We've updated this, and in red, you'll see where we added the PCI targets for our ultra-thin as we make changes to the program. This chart shows the program targets in comparison to the work plan distribution for 2019 program year. The pie chart on the top left shows the street maintenance needs by district, and on the bottom left, the street maintenance need by road classification. On the top right, you'll see the chart by, distribution by district, and on the bottom, you'll see the 2019 work plan distribution by road classification. The totals do not include the alternate work street, streets that we have, we always identify some alternate streets, and they're not included here. 194 streets are proposed for maintenance treatment under the 2019 program, and it totals approximately 822,000 square yards, or 44 linear miles. Great strides have been made over the last several years to extend the life of our city streets, and with implementation of the SPMP, increasing citywide proactive street maintenance effort. At the completion of the 2019 program, when we're completed at the end of 2019, 1,000, 1,103 streets will have been treated, equating to about 5 million square yards, or 323 miles of streets revitalized. Today, we're asking for approval of the work plan, which is the list of streets attached to the resolution, and then under item, the next item that I mentioned to you, I think it's 26, I think it is, we're asking for your approval of the AE contract amendment so that we can move forward with the delivery order development and the, the bid process to secure contracts for the overlay and the ultra-thin treatments. So that's what we're asking for today. This is a location where you can find the updates to the program online, we, we keep updated, all we've done, and with that, I stand by for any questions that you may have about the program. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I was a mouthful, it was a lot.
Take a deep breath, you've covered a lot of territory.
I hope I wasn't too fast.
Oh, this is exciting, we're moving forward.
It's good.
Mr. Garza.
First off, Valerie, thank you very much for your efforts.
First off, Valerie, thank you very much for your efforts on streets, it's kind of a thing that I've been working on since before I got on council. I guess the biggest question I've got right now first is, on seal coats, we started the first couple of years, we got about 100%, well, the page eight, now, just to ask a question, was the goal to do, or was that what we actually performed, 100% of the overlays, 100% of the seal coat? That's what was contracted out, or?
On this-
I guess I'm not reading that table right, but I'm trying to understand how we went from the first two years, 100% to 42% of the seal coats.
Councilman Garza, on this page is the current status of those years. So, in 2014 through 2016 is 100% complete. This is a percentage of what's complete. The 2017 work plan, the contracted overlays are 100% complete, and so is the seals done by street ops. What you have, what we haven't, we've only got 42% complete of the contracted seals.
Okay, and that's a mix of collectors, arterials, and residential, all combined?
Yes. And what we're proposing by the change we're making is to separate that out.
Okay.
So, of the 42% you have left, if there's any residential streets in there, we're going to have street operations do the seals. Any arterials and collectors in there, we're going to include that in the contract for the ultra-thins. So-
Okay, since we're, but, since we were contracting that portion out, at least, we were doing it across the board.
Yes.
But, what leads us to believe that if we weren't getting the performance from the contractors before, that we're going to get the performance from the contractors on the more critical collectors and arterials?
Right. We were getting performance from the contractor on overlays.
Right.
They're not going to do any, we have stopped them from doing any more overlays, I mean, any more residential seals. I mean, let me correct that, any seals, period. We have stopped them from doing any seals. So, they will no longer do seals, that's where we had the problem with the performance, as well as the wear of the seal on the ground. We're going to contract and now do the arterials and collectors by contract, the contractor for ultra-thins. Am I answering your question? No?
Halfway.
Okay.
Okay, I'm still getting, I'm still trying to get to a point, I know, it's a different process, I guess the ultra-thin is what you're talking about, right?
Yes.
But, you have confidence that even though we didn't get the performance we wanted to from the contractors in doing seals?
Yes.
That we're going to get-
From doing all the-
Better performance from them on, using this ultra-
Yes, sir.
-thin method, right?
Yes.
On collectors and arterials, so we'll be able to keep that up.
Yes, sir.
Now, a couple more questions. One was, when you did the pie, and we looked at the improvements, and I'm talking about page three, right?
Yes.
We, I see the progress, I see that some of the areas where we've improved a little bit. But when we first talked about the street programs, and when we're talking about residential, we're just talking about strictly all streets, I guess, it's really all, they had talked about a billion-dollar problem, program.
Yes.
And, we're now, in my estimation, about almost 10 years into the accelerated street program that we had before. But we haven't been able to move, I guess, the needle more, more of the streets into the fair. I mean, I know we've done some improvement, but for the money we've spent, in my viewpoint, about a third of the billion dollars originally estimated, we haven't been able to move it far enough along to say, if we spend a billion dollars, of course, you're going to have to keep spending, I know that, I understand that, but to say, we're going to have now more good streets versus poor streets.
Right. My comment, Councilman Garza, is, to look at this chart, this is a snapshot of all three classifications. To talk about this, if you take a look at what we were in 2014, in 2014 to 2019, you see almost 10% increase in good on arterials. And that is mostly due to the bond, and the bond work that's being done.
Reconstruction.
And then, exactly. And the same thing on the collectors, you see almost a 10% increase there. But I think what you're pointing out is, okay, so what has the movement been on the residential side? Well, you'll see 4% movement in, from 2014 to 2019. You have to remember, with 800 miles of street, what that 4% represents, as far as increasing the good on residential streets. But if you're talking in terms of all streets in general, it moves you back to this pie chart, where you have maintenance, you have bond funding, the arterials and collectors, and then the residential locals, where we're still working to build the program. We do have some money, and you know, a lot of projects that's underway, but it's a tiny movement, and as we continue to build that program, and we are, then we can get that number to look like the poor drop on the residential side. I don't know, do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I do.
So, when you talk about the billion-dollar problem, it's not of one classification, it was a street problem, right?
Well, yeah, we've come to realize, oh, it's more of a $2 billion problem than-
That's right.
Than a $1 billion problem.
And so, what, we aggressively worked here and got the maintenance program underway, and we got the funding for it, and it's done some movement. But now, as we go and build, you'll see now, the next complaint area from a lot of the citizens is the section in yellow, which is the residential roads that can't be maintained, and they need to be reconstructed. So, of course, we got the 3.4 that we're working on, that program, we did the worst first, we did the test programs, we still did a little bit, but we're still building with the money we're putting in the Residential Reconstruction Fund to build up and get a sustainable program, so that we can move the needle a little bit more on, I guess, the residential section.
And the last question is just, at the very end of the presentation, you talked about 44 linear miles, and that seemed like, for SPMP, which is the maintenance program, that seemed like a light number to me.
What, 44, I think, was, hold on.
Page 20.
Right here. That is for 2019 only.
Right, that's what proposed.
That's for one year.
Yeah, it just, it just still, it's not reconstruction, so it still seems-
Right.
A little, a little light. It seems to me like-
Right.
Should be able to do more seal and overlays than-
If you take a look at this, you'll see what we did over all the years as we had it. As we increase and decide to do more, I believe, of the ultra-thins, you'll see that the ultra-thins are going to cost a little bit more. We did the treatments of seals and overlays, even though everybody loves an overlay better than a seal.
Sure.
But both of those extend the life of a street. So, we did the seals, because economically, we could spread that money a little bit more. As we moved from doing less seals, and only doing them on residential, we're now doing ultra-thin, they're a little bit more. If you come back to this chart, and you see the prices I showed you, overlay is about $50, $50 a square, right here. Wait, is it that one? Yes. Overlay is $50 a square yard. Ultra-thins are about half that price, and then the seals are $18 a square yard. So, as we move to this change, we're going to try to compete, complete the same amount, but we will have a little bit more funding that's needed for the ultra-thins, but you're going to have at least a treatment that we know on arterial and collector will last a little bit longer than the seals have been lasting.
Yeah, but it seems like the increase in the cost is a higher percentage in the amount that we're extending, the percentage that we're extending the life of the street.
Right. The ultra-thins will go out for, I forgot, how many years?
10, it says on the top side.
Yeah, I think it's seven to 10, right? Seven to 10 years.
Versus six to eight.
Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Well, fixing streets are always great news, and I noticed on the new program that Lola Johnson is set for a seal coat, so those out in the audience, there'll be some good news with it. But, I also noticed on there that we're doing the ultra-thins, is that an overchip? Okay.
That's the branding.
Yeah. On a fairly high PCI, we've got a number of arterials of greater than 80 with it. One of them is Flower Bluff Drive, which I'm pretty familiar with, I drive it every day. And I hate to be sitting here advocating not spending on a street, but that street's about 10 years old, the pavement's in good shape, it's got a few bumps in it where you had settlement at the inlet boxes. But overall, and, you know, if we do an ultra-thin overlay, I'll be calling myself up and saying, "Why, on this street, there's really a good riding surface." And I'm saying this, I drive it every day, and looking at your chart, shouldn't we be focusing more on those that are about to fall off the cliff in the 60 and 70 PCI, rather than we have some streets up to 87 that we're going to be putting an ultra-thin on?
I'll take it in District 2, if you don't want it.
No, I'm keeping it in 4th. But, no, and I've had these calls in the past, basically, it's, we're on the SM program, "Why are you fixing Compton when Graham is so bad?" But I think in this case, that, I'm questioning, why are we doing Flower Bluff Drive, built to new standards on there? A three-quarter overlay won't fix those depressions, the settlement at those four inlets.
And what we do is, we look at the PCI score as a selection tool. It's a preliminary screening tool for checking which candidates we want, and you might have an 80 now, but that won't mean that we won't do, just because it has, there's a street with a 65, we'll jump and do that street first, because that street might have other issues that we need to address prior to it, and we can't address until, say, next year. So, we need to do other ultra-thins within your district this year.
Oh, yeah.
And that's why, you know, there's more than enough streets to do everywhere.
No shortage.
There's no shortage, no. Believe me, I know there's no shortage. And we, so we want to take care of the streets as best we can, and so, we use a screening tool to figure out which streets we're going to do, but then we want to make sure we balance the work as much as possible. And it might be that we realize that we can't get to Flower Bluff within the next three years, so we do it now, or we have to wait four years. And four years from now, it won't longer last for preventive maintenance. It'll be needing rehab at that point, it'll cost us a lot more money, so we'll take care of it now.
Yeah. And one last observation, it's a conversation we've had, but Walden Road, which is a 25-year-old concrete street, part of it is scheduled for an ultra-thin, so when we're having that concrete versus asphalt discussion on there, we're going to be spending money now on maintaining, putting an asphalt overlay, 25-year-old concrete street. But again, thank you, Valerie, you know, this is really great news, seeing these miles, and seeing streets in all of our districts with it, particularly on Lola Johnson. Thanks.
Mr. Hernandez.
Well, aside from having, looking at the 2019 plan, and District 5 looking a little bit light, I think District 3 is a little bit light too, but I guess since we're the new guys. But I would have liked to have seen this in an Excel format, so I could have seen how many lane miles. Do you know how many lane miles we're doing per district?
Okay, so, I don't know, do you know that?
We have the information back at the office, for sure. I can get that back to you.
We have the streets listed by district.
Well, I see the list, but I couldn't filter it to-
We'd have to get that for you.
Because I didn't have it in Excel format.
Now, I just want to remind you, Mr. Hernandez, that it is done by district by need.
I get you.
And so, what I had told a lot of people, that if you don't have many that is maybe being maintained, you may get more of the percentage of the need of those that need to be reconstructed, and vice versa. And so, when you take a look at it, that's citywide, that's how, it's been really tough.
You might want to look at that from a district perspective. Obviously, we have the needs, specific streets, and I know I've talked to you several, about several streets. Van Earn, Middelkauf, that need reconstruction, and we talked about those.
Exactly.
I did have a question, last time we talked about this, and this was before Albert was with us, we talked about the seal coat issue, and that we contracted a portion of it, and we did some in-house, but we only had one crew-
Right.
-that was doing seal coats. And that issue came up, where the contractors weren't doing it quite as well as what we were doing in-house. So, your solution is, instead of, instead of increasing our in-house capability, it's to do this ultra-thin at a higher cost? Is that how I understand this?
It is to do the ultra-thin on arterials and collectors, the higher-volume streets, where the performance will be better, and the treatment will last. It is also to shift all the seals that are residential, that were contracted, over for in-house staff to do.
Okay, so, does that increase the number of lane miles that they're going to be doing seal coats on?
To the operations, yes.
Okay, so, are you going to be expanding, because as I understood, you only had one piece of equipment to do seal coats with one crew of 15 people, is that incorrect?
It's one crew with approximately 19 people, yes.
19 people, okay, so, are we going to be expanding that? Are we going to have two crews, are we going to, so we can do more of these seal coats for residential streets?
The way it is right now, we're doing our seal coats with operating funds, and we'll do, starting in late April, early May, and finish the seal coats by August. And the seal coat season, we can extend it all the way to October, so we still have time to do it, so we're going to do it with the amount of time that we have, without having to increase the workforce.
Okay, I understand that, but I mean, if you're going to be continuing to do this, and it's more, you're doing it more effectively with in-house crews, wouldn't it be better to expand your in-house crews? Because last time I checked, and you're, the one that was, I forgot, I'm sorry, Charlie back there, he had mentioned that he came from Kingsville, and they only had one crew there too. And we only have one crew here, it seems like it's a little, somewhat of a problem there.
And the seal coat crew, we're fine with the one crew that we have, and we could do the additional work and everything else. The issue is not the seal coating, the issue is you've got to prepare the road for the seal coat. And so, before you do the seal coat, when you have the small inlet sags, depressions, you had to fix those areas, you've got to fix curb and gutter issues, you have to fix water line issues, if there's any, and getting all that prep work for the seal coat is what takes more time. And so, if we're going to be doing more, we might need to focus on increasing our workforce, doing all the repair work, so we can have more time to do the seal coat.
They do a lot, they do a lot of the prep work prior to-
Okay, you know, a few years back, they did my road on Lake Superior, so I'm familiar with how they went through the process, because I sat there and watched them. Okay, so, it's a matter, but to that point, if this is the option we want to go to, since we were not, we did not have success with contractors, is, would it not be prudent to have more crew do this in-house?
We don't need the more crew, what we need is more crews to do all the prep work, so we can make sure we have all the streets to do it. And the second crew, we would be able to finish it, instead of doing it and finishing in September, October, we'd still be back to finishing in August, but then we're going to do all those crews and folks the rest of the year. We don't have the operating budget to continue.
I see what you're saying. What, I guess, maybe, maybe what I'm looking at is, do you need more equipment in order to be able to do more lane miles in the timeframe that you have? I mean, as you understand, this, you have, you have to have a certain temperature-
Right.
Right?
Yes.
Air temperature, right? You can't do this in the wintertime.
Not in the wintertime.
So, if you're, if you only have a certain amount of time to do it, and you only have one piece of equipment, what, I mean, how do you expand that?
Mr. Hernandez, it is where you have to schedule the work. The longest part of the work for seal is the prep work, which they can do anytime. That is a different crew. That can be done even by contract. They have a contract to go in there, fix the base failures, do all the prep work, is what we call. The seal work that they do, they can do more seal with the crew that they have, because they come back and they just put the seal on. It is a very quick thing that they do, once the prep work is completed. So, they will be doing and handling the additional work by possibly having to contract out some of the prep work that needs to be done for the additional square yards. Does that explain it?
Let me just ask you, this is, this is kind of like asking what time it is, and you're telling us how to build a watch. We, if we want to get down to the details, maybe we'll have a little workshop, and everybody can get down and get into nitty-gritty, but-
Okay.
We need to move forward.
Last question.
Last question.
Last question on this, is that, you know, we made a purchase for the emollient-
Emulsion.
Emulsion stuff that we needed for this. Now, if you're going to do it all in-house, my guess is you're going to come back with a request for more purchase of this, of this product. Is that correct?
Emulsion.
Emulsion.
The contract we have is going to do enough to cover what we have right now with a small leftover quantity, to, just in case we need, we still have a small buffer quantity in the contract still. We double-checked that before going with this plan.
Okay, so, going, moving into the future for the next-
For next year.
-cycle, we're going to be purchasing more?
Yes. And for your information also as well, we only, we have, when you're doing the seal coat, you have distributors that shoot the oil, and then you have spreader boxes that spread the rock behind that, and then rollers and doing everything else. We have sufficient distributors, we have more than one, and the spreader boxes, we have a primary unit, and we have a secondary backup unit. So, if we need to try in-house and everything else, if we see it getting tight, we can also create a second crew to try to do some for the short term, and then see it that way, if we need to do more, they can get back with you to see about building a second crew.
Okay, and ultimately, ideally, I'd like to try and do more with what we have, and if we can do it in-house, it'd be better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and we appreciate all the work. Ms. Harlow?
Thank you.
Well, turn your light on.
It's on. Thank you.
What haven't we covered?
Oh, we probably covered it, but I'm going to go ahead and speak anyway. Mrs. Gray, and you did, we did reference this, but I want to make clear, because Mr. Smith mentioned it, I was also noticing that a lot of the PCIs are higher. So what is happening with the ones that are, we're trying to keep from dropping? You may have addressed it a little bit ago, but...
The work plan you've seen is just the initial cut. Once we approve the consultant contract for the AE to come back to start to develop the DOs, they'll, they'll look at the rest of what the street has, because the PCI is strictly a cut. They still need to be inspected to look and see if there's too much that they can do it or not. Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm saying the other streets, like there's, as he's mentioned, there's a lot of higher numbers.
Right.
And so...
The higher the number, the better the street. We're targeting the one that's at the lower range to catch them before they drop off.
Right, but the drop-off would be...
Yes. The drop-off takes it to a new treatment.
Right, but I'm saying, what's the drop-off? I thought, I vaguely remember the drop-off between, you know, the reconstruction and saving it, so to speak, was what, in the fifty, or high fifty, fifty-five?
Oh, let me put the precision there, I have the slide. It's on your slide.
Well, it still seems like they're high, and I mean, that's...
It's right here.
I'm just, and how were these streets selected? Because I also noticed District Three has very few.
There's the target for the PCIs.
Fifty-five, right. How were these selected, Mrs. Gray?
It was select, the streets were selected, initial cut by PCI. That's what I was explaining to you here. It was the guiding principles that was set by council. I'm trying to go back, am I going too far? I'm going the wrong direction. Wrong direction. This is guiding principles that were adopted by council in 2013. All right. Right here. This is the street selection criteria.
Basically, I picked them out.
So starting to wonder, so District Three is, still think that's low for three. Oh, on the, on the re, on the reconstruct. I see. Okay, gotcha, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't see any more lights lit up. Do we have anything on item twenty-eight and twenty-nine on future?
Thank you.
Oh, not twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. All right, then we'll go to item twenty-seven.
Mayor, I had a question on twenty-six.
Oh, I didn't see a light. Okay, ask your question.
Sorry, let me get to it real quick. A quick question on this, had to do with the financial aspect of this. You have these seven contracts, one hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars for each one of them, for a total of one point nine nine two million. However, the budget for this, for this year is five hundred thousand. My mis, right, so you're asking basically for this to be tripled, the budget for this backflow preventers to be tripled next year?
What, what, what that is saying is that we started off with the five hundred thousand dollar budget, which was basically seed money. By the way, Dan Grimsor, Executive Director of Watered Utilities. And so this is going to be, we've already set up a funding revenue and expenditure, starting with five hundred thousand, but every time we do a service, an inspection and/or a repair, we're going to charge that person on our water bill, and it's going to go back into that fund. So the fund's always going to have, we're going to continue to have money in there to pay these contractors off as we continue to do inspections that are delinquent. So, so it was just, it was just an estimate on a contract to have over the next two years to complete all the delinquent accounts throughout the city.
I get you, and I understand these contracts are up to a certain amount, not necessarily that you're going to spend them all, but I just, you know...
We're only going to do what, we're only going to do that's what is delinquent. It's just, it's just an amount as to, say, a cap, and you can clarify it more if you'd like.
He's correct. And then another aspect of that to look at or consider is that even though he has five hundred thousand in the account, for this year, he's only going to spend one hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred projected out of that five hundred. So that's what he's showing.
Because none of his, has been spent so far?
Correct, we have not started.
All right, so the idea is to, do you have projections to how much income you're going to get from these inspections?
Well, the inspections are a hundred and thirty dollars apiece, and there's going to be an admin fee of seventy-five dollars per inspection. That's for the non-fire. For the fire, it's two hundred and fifty dollars per inspection, and then if they require repair, then whatever that repair cost would be, and so forth.
Okay, so next time you have something like this, can you please have some sort of income stream there as well? Because all I'm seeing is a tripling of the, of the actual budget by contract.
Okay.
So, you know, we're putting this on the hook for a million nine, and we only show a budget of five hundred thousand, so it looks like we have to triple the budget for that. So if we have some income stream tied to this, then we can actually make a more informed decision. Okay? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions on Ms. Harlow?
Thank you. Mr. Grimsor, how many, what's the total, total amount of devices? I know we have twenty-five hundred, but out of how many?
Approximately seven thousand.
Seven thousand? Okay. And that, your seventy-five admin, does that recover our staff time, all of that?
That's, that's what that seventy-five dollars is for, is for the admin time, for tracking, managing, issuing the counts, and so forth.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I don't see any other questions. Anybody else have anything on twenty-five or twenty-six? All right, we'll go to item twenty-seven, public hearing, first reading on rezoning for property located at or near Twenty-One Ten Laguna Shores Road, B.A. Terraferma Development LLC.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. Nina Nixon-Mendes, Director of Development Services. The rezoning request is from a residential estate district to a multifamily district, and the purpose is to allow for the construction of an apartment complex. The applicant is B&amp;A Terraferma Development, represented by Miguel Saldana. The property is located on the west side of Laguna Shores Road, north of Hustling Hornet Drive, and south of Lola Johnson Road. Property fronts Laguna Shores Road, which is designated as a P-one Parkway Collector Street, and is constructed as two lanes with a center stripe. To the north is a single-family residential subdivision along Lola Johnson Road, which was platted in nineteen fifty-three, and is zoned RS-six, Single Family Six District. To the south are vacant properties zoned IH Heavy Industrial District and CR-one Resort Commercial District, which are owned by Flower Bluff ISD. To the east are vacant properties, submerged properties, and single-family homes zoned CR-one Resort Commercial District. Five properties were recently rezoned to RS-15 Single Family District. To the west are vacant properties, including a pond, which are zoned CR-one Resort Commercial District, RM-one Multifamily District, and RS-six Single Family District, and these are owned by Flower Bluff ISD. The intended use is to allow for the construction of an apartment complex. The property is fifteen point ninety-six acres in size and is unplatted, and the applicant is requesting RM-two district. The subject property is currently zoned RE Residential Estate District, and consists of vacant land, and has remained undeveloped since annexation in nineteen sixty-two. The proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, which calls for low-density residential. The subject property is located within the boundaries of the Flower Bluff Area Development Plan. The proposed rezoning is incompatible with neighboring properties and with the general character of the surrounding area. The residential subdivision to the north along Lola Johnson Road, and the recent rezonings across Laguna Shores Road, to single-family zoning districts indicate that single-family residential is the predominant use on this portion of Laguna Shores Road. The proposed RM-two Multifamily District allows up to thirty dwelling units per acre, and therefore the maximum build-out of apartment units on a fifteen point ninety-six acre tract is four hundred seventy-nine apartment units. As Laguna Shores Road is designated as a P-one Parkway, which has a right-of-way of eighty feet, but only has a pavement section of forty feet. A C-one Minor Collector Street also has a pavement section of forty feet. The comprehensive plan calls for apartments to have direct access to arterials, and the closest arterial is Waldron Drive, which is three-quarters of a mile from the subject We do have an update to the public notification. There were fifty-eight public notices mailed, and two were received in favor, twenty-four in opposition, which represents sixty-five percent of the area. A three-fourths vote would be required to approve this item. Planning Commission met on April seventeenth, and the unanimous recommendation is denial of the RM-two Multifamily Two District. The applicant is requesting a floor amendment to amend the rezoning application, and the request is for RS-six Single Family Six District. Staff recommends denial of the RM-two Multifamily Two District, and in lieu approval of the RS-six Single Family District. The RS-six is consistent with the surrounding character of the neighborhood, which is also zoned RS-six. RS-six would require an amendment to the future land use plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential. I stand by for questions.
All right, the presentation's been made, then we'll, we'll open the public hearing and ask, anyone from the public have any comment on item twenty-seven?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Miguel Saldana, forty-five fifty-three Moon Lake Ridge, seven-eight-four-one-three. Staff has indicated, my client did request for a change of zoning for apartments. The intent was to develop some low-density apartments, about two-story, two-story apartments. It was going to be about two hundred units that they were proposing. A lot of the comments that came out at the Planning Commission meeting dealt about flooding, but as you all well know, any flooding that happens, any runoff, the applicant or the developer has to address it itself. It cannot increase any runoff onto any adjacent property. Any runoff that sheet flows onto the property has to be addressed by the developer. Now, whether this property is developed with apartments or single-family, they have to do that. One of the comments that was made earlier at the, at the meeting was that the property, their property floods right now because of the water level. Well, this area is in a flood zone, and this property will have to be elevated to get it to be able to build homes. But having said that, they will also have to address any runoff water that comes onto the property, and address it and take care of it. Another comment that came out during the public hearings was that this is an area that the Flower Bluff uses to educate their students on, on the environmental of the area. This property is privately owned, does not, does not extend out into any Flower Bluff ISD property. Flower Bluff ISD has direct access to about three-quarters of the border of the pond. The property does not extend into the pond. As a matter of fact, the property owner had to give up about two acres when it was determined that it was in a wetlands area. So that's why the property usually used to be sixteen, eighteen acres, is now just under sixteen acres, because some of it was, as far as endangered species, we have done our preliminary research with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and they have indicated preliminary that there are no endangered species. It is not the applicant's, my client's intent. I had three minutes, I didn't think I had three minutes.
Well, go ahead and finish your comments.
Okay. The, where was I? So, anyway, there are no endangered species. The, the client, my client is not intent to encroach anywhere into the, into the pond, and all the traffic will be going out to Laguna Shores, nowhere to the schools. As staff indicated, the, my client has agreed to accept the RS-six Single Family District for this property. Thank you, and if there are any questions, I'd be more happy to answer.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on item number twenty-seven?
Good afternoon. My name's Linda Barganski, and I live at thirty-eight thirty-eight Emu Drive in Corpus Christi. I'm here representing Flower Bluff ISD. We have been attending all the meetings for the rezoning, and I just wanted to come up and, again, let you know how Flower Bluff ISD feels about the property that is trying to be developed. I think Mr. Saldana? Yes, Mr. Saldana was correct in stating that we do use that area as our outdoor classroom. Students go to the outdoor classroom numerous times a day, starts at fifth grade and goes all the way to high school. We do use the pond to do activities for classroom study and science. Students are always over there, and we are very concerned about the traffic issues that'll be over there. Mr. Saldana said that the traffic would be going out to Laguna Shores, which he is correct, but you can only go left or right when you get to Laguna Shores. If you go right for about a half a mile, you will be in Flower Bluff ISD. We have a tremendous problem with traffic over there already. With adding more apartments there, our traffic would, would just be worse. I have to field parent calls at the beginning of the year, every year, and tell them that the traffic will improve, but not the way they want it to improve. So we're throwing more traffic issues there at where our junior high intermediate is. The other thing that I just wanted to make a comment on is that we're concerned about the contamination of the pond. If runoff from the building, from the debris from building there goes into our pond, then it will kill the vegetation and the fish that the teachers and students have grown in the pond. So I just wanted to come and let you know our concerns, and I thank you for your time that you're spending on this. Thank you.
Mr. Malinas, you want to ask her a question?
No, I have a question to say.
My, my question, this is a pretty valuable piece of property then of the school, right?
Yes, it is.
Has the school ever offered to buy it?
Oh, are you, you're, I thought you were talking about our pond is very valuable to us. You're talking about...
But it's on this piece of property, right?
Well, no, it butts up to our property. The property that he's trying to develop butts up to the pond.
Well, is the property, where's, is the pond on his property?
No.
Then, so, I mean, I'm confused, if the, the pond's not on his property, so why is it even a part of this discussion?
Well, we don't have all the pond. Flower Bluff ISD does not own the whole pond.
I know, but we're, we're discussing this man's piece of private property, and it doesn't include the pond.
No, it is.
Then why is the pond part of the discussion?
Because of the building. When you build, it's going to run off into the pond. Do you know what I'm talking, when you build anything and concrete debris, everything runs off, and we're concerned that it may contaminate the pond.
Well, I think there's, okay, I understand you, but, okay, well, he, the builder would have responsibility for protecting the runoff and that sort of thing, but I just thought, if all this property was to the benefit of the kids, and they were enjoying it so much that it would seem the school would just buy it, but if the pond's not on there, so the property really has no value to the school district, other than you'll collect taxes on it when the improvements are made.
Probably.
And it will have, if it's apartment, it'd put more kids in your school?
Yes, it would.
Which you want or don't want?
We do want more kids at our school.
Well, some school districts don't want multifamily...
No, we want, we want more kids.
...moving in because they're overcrowded, so that's, I mean, it's not a negative question. I mean, there are some schools that don't want residential. They like industrial because it doesn't produce any kids, but it produces lots of tax revenue, so...
No, we like kids, and we want them in our school.
All right.
We're just concerned about the traffic and the contamination.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Malina?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question for staff. You mentioned that the applicant would consider RS six, but that's not low-density, is it?
It's not low-density in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Low-density would be one to three dwelling units are, per acre. RS six would be about seven dwelling units per acre.
So what zoning is low-density?
That would be RE, for example, where you would have one dwelling per acre. RS twenty-two, which would be about two dwellings per acre, and then RS fifteen, which would come in about three dwellings per acre. So those, those three zoning districts would fall under the low-density.
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
Yes, sir. RE, which is residential estate. RS twenty-two, and RS fifteen.
So RE is one residence per acre?
Yes, sir.
And RS twenty-two is?
Two.
Two residents, okay.
And RS fifteen would be three.
Got it. Okay, that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
I have a question for the developer, or the applicant. You're, so you're saying that you moved it from changing it to this RS six. What's your plan? You know what the plan is? What's the, what's the overall plan then for that, that piece of land?
We originally, the client originally wanted to put apartments, but hearing everything that's going on is willing to take the RS six, which is single-family. Single-family, yeah. Ms. Nina was correct, and it's about seven units per acre, but that's what the ordinance says. But if you actually go out and develop, when you take in the streets and all that, you're looking more about four units, maybe four-point, four-and-a-quarter units per acre. But the applicant is now willing to develop this property with single-family residential, which will require, which will not allow them to use septic systems, which is currently used on the properties around Lola Johnson. So we'll eliminate number of septic systems that could be allowed in there if we were to go RE, one-acre lots, or R twenty-two, which is half-acre lots. So we would eliminate that because there is a lift station at the end of Lola Johnson that this property would connect, and we've already talked to utility department, and that lift station currently unused, city paid for it, but this developer would be able to use it and then start developing with single-family residential. Just what is on Lola Johnson RS six, that's what we would accept. Is that your question, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Mr. Saldana? How long has your client owned that piece of property?
He's only, what, about a year, about a year. His, his, the previous owner told him he would have no problem.
Okay.
And I, and I said, did you even consider getting, getting that on writing or getting contingent to the rezoning before you bought it? He didn't.
Okay. Ms. Nina? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
What's current zoning on that property?
The current zoning is RE, residential estate.
So, so the property is developable, it's an RE zoning?
Yes.
Okay. And when was that property zoned on?
It was zoned RE in two thousand and six.
Okay. And did they attempt to change the zoning at any point in time since then?
Not to my knowledge. I don't know.
Okay, Mr. Garza, you sat on the Planning Commission, and, okay, so, so there was an attempt to change it from RE to a higher zoning, which failed?
Two thousand and eight. Okay, I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, just a question. How many residential, can you, on a real estate, residential estate district, you can put how many households per acre?
One.
And on this one, they can put?
There'd be about fifteen dwellings.
Fifteen dwellings, right?
Yes, sir. No, fifteen dwellings total.
Oh.
On the RE residential estate.
So you can put six to an acre in this, what you're talking about?
On RS six, you could put seven dwellings. So with RS six, let me get that for you. Yeah, you could, about a hundred twelve, single-family homes, that would be gross, and then if you, you know, removed about twenty percent for streets, you're looking at about ninety, single-family homes with, that could potentially be developed under RS six.
Ninety homes versus how many in the?
Fifteen. Fifteen in the RE.
May I have a question for Mr. Hunter?
Nina, so, in two thousand and eight, we're Councilman Garza, in two thousand and eight, when, where they were looking to change this to RM fifteen, is that correct? Multifamily, so is RM something?
No, MS. They changed.
Oh, they changed all the things? I think RM's multi-residential, right?
Yes.
So, okay. RM, one, man, now, now I'm all confused on all the abbreviations. RM fifteen?
Or RS fifteen.
Or RS?
That's a single-family district.
Okay.
With fifteen thousand.
When we looked at that, I know, it's like, it's throwing me off.
I think part of the rule is you have to be drunk. The initials and the description have no relationship whatsoever. This is, Peter, A and B ought to be attaboy and not something else. So as part of your looking over, at least get it to where we can understand, this makes no sense to anybody. Go ahead.
So other than the potential apartments and overlooking into other people's homes, if it's a two-story apartment, that seems a little bit, maybe exaggerated, maybe not, maybe they're really tall two-story apartments, maybe they're short fence lines, maybe there are no fence lines. I'm not here to judge that, but what I am here to judge is, is other, or ask, is other than that, the overlooking into other people's residential properties and being at the location that close to the school, what else are they concerned about on the RS?
On, on the proposed RM two?
RS fit one-five, sorry.
On the proposed rezoning is RM two.
Yes, no, but haven't we talked about in the past an RM fifteen? RS, sorry.
RS fifteen, yeah. Well, RS, RS fifteen, RS fifteen would be single-family dwellings. Now, most of those single-family dwellings, for example, there's a velocity zone along Laguna Shores, so that would have to be up on pier. And then in the floodplain, of course, you know, that would require fill.
And that would be kind of meeting in the middle, it would be in between the estate and the multifamily, right?
The RS fifteen, yes. In other words, RS fifteen would provide for a single-family at minimum lot of fifteen thousand square feet.
Okay. And, okay, I might have a question in a second, sorry. I'll let Gil go ahead.
So under the RE, the acre lots with septic tanks, is that the understanding, or would they be having to require to do the actual, use the lift station with that residential estate?
Well, you could have a septic tank under, under RE.
Okay, so, and looking at the septic tanks, my guess is would be buddying up against this pond, and would you more, more likely contaminate the pond with septic tanks?
You know, again, our health department, you know, permits those, and there's, you know, an, an, an air aeration field that they would have to respect to have it installed. So we do have standards for installation.
Okay.
Related to that. And that, those are designed to prevent contamination.
Okay, I'm just, you know, I understand how the septic tanks work and, and, okay, thank you.
All right. Anything, I mean, I think we're still in the public hearing, but we're asking people to comment, so I think you can have a seat until, until you can't have a seat. Let's get, I think there's these folks have been wanting to say something down here.
Yeah, a few of us.
Okay, all right, come on.
Hello again. I'm Rebecca Root. I live at three-twenty-five Lola Johnson Road. I've lived there for seventeen years. I was flooded out of my home in Houston in two thousand and two. Four feet of water in the house, eleven houses got completely torn down due to raging water. I have an acre at the end of Lola Johnson, which regularly floods, all the way up to the patios, but fortunately not into the house. In the early two thousands, we came to the zoning board. This is the third time I've been to the zoning board until you guys on this one piece of property. Initially, it was owned and it was like commercial. The residents of Lola Johnson at that time went with the owner and had it changed, requested the zoning changed to residential estate lots, which fits in with Lola Johnson. Lola Johnson is a very unique street in Corpus Christi. Twenty, forty-two lots, twenty-three houses, ten acres in the back, five houses. So we're twenty, our whole neighborhood is twenty-eight houses. When you talk about building a hundred, ninety to a hundred houses next door to us, it will overtake our little neighborhood. We're a very quiet street, we're just working people, RNs, we work for the college, we work for the, for the different industries here in town, business owners, that type of people. The first time we came to the zoning board, it was to get it to change to residential estate lots. The second time was when they want, the owner at that time in two thousand and eight, who wanted to build apartments on this. We went to zoning board, it was denied by staff, it was denied by zoning board, and it was denied by city council. Now someone else owns the property, and we're back at the same spot again. They want to build apartments, they want to build high-density buildings on this twelve acres. There's only twelve acres left over there, the rest of it's underwater. Part of it's in the pond, part of it's wetlands. There is a sixty-acre property that the school owns that abuts up to this property on two sides. The school owns the property all the way back behind Lola Johnson. They own the property behind my fence on Lola Johnson, okay? So there's a sixty-acre tract besides the pond that is the Flower Bluff Environmental Education Center and wetlands. And the students are in that sixty acres. They are not on the private property doing research. They are in, within their property lines on their sixty acres there to do research. They've had part of it changed, they've had part of it changed to wetlands with the research that the students do there. I live on Lola Johnson, I'm concerned about how many, how many houses to be built on this property. We like the one acre. Everybody on Lola Johnson is all in favor of building residential estate, one-acre lots, which fits in to the residents of Lola Johnson.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Someone else, I saw a hand or two.
My name's Darson, Darson Alwight. I live at two-eight-one Lola Johnson. Few excerpts from the area development plan for Flower Bluff dated back in nineteen ninety-three. Specific goals Flower Bluff Development Plan, to encourage responsible, require responsible growth, preserve the existing natural environment. Flower Bluff's unique to Corpus Christi. It encourages sensible and appropriate development adjacent to the naval, air station facilities. It calls for protection of the unique development pattern and environmental resources in the area. It calls for protection of the Keo de Oso as well as Laguna Madre. It calls for protection environment and through prevention enhancement. It creates a zoning district to protect environmentally sensitive areas. It calls for creating zones which allow for density and uses that are compatible in the naval air station, air installation compatible with the use. It also calls for development of large lots. There's also an issue with no public transportation. Laguna Shores Road has no bee service, there's no sidewalks, you've got very narrow shoulders, and you're going to have people walking up and down Laguna Shores, going to store, doing things of that nature. I don't think that's a very good proposition. I understand they want to use that lift station if they're able to, that would be their plus. If not, I see issues getting to the lift station via gravity because of the fact the water tables are so high out there. I can't dig a fence post without getting water three feet deep in the hole. So with all these things being said, I would like y'all, if you wouldn't mind, looking into the Flower Bluff Area Development Plan and making your decisions accordingly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks. My name's Jerry Hartung. I live at twenty-one oh-one Laguna Shores Road. A few years ago, when this was designated estate zoning, that was done because of a very comprehensive research and facts that had to do with the Flower Bluff Area Development Plan and a lot of good reasoning. And that held until four, five years ago, when they wanted to rezone it to dense apartments, and then, of course, well, y'all know all that stuff, I'll save you from that. But, you know, I congratulate the city on, on this zoning, and I think the zoning is appropriate and it should be held. You can see, actually, a little piece of the pond is on this property that we're talking about, and it is the shore of that pond, so it's, it's definitely involved. This pond is directly linked with the Redhead, Redhead Pond Wilderness Area, and that's directly located by water flow and by area, land area. So whatever runoff gets into this pond is going to be into the Redhead Pond Wilderness Area project also, which we've been working really hard to bring back alive. Well, it's alive now, but bring back to a better state. Also, Laguna Shores has just received the bond issue for improving Laguna Shores, which is a great opportunity for the city to show off what makes Corpus so great. That's a road that runs right along the Laguna Shores, it shows wildlife, it shows our water resources and everything. And I don't think that dense housing in a Velocity Two Zone on that road is the way to go. You have a lot of problems with congestion, with the traffic congestions too, because Lola is a one-lane in each direction, and you have school congestion up at Hustling Hornet and Laguna Shores, and then you go to the other end where Graham empties into Walden Road, and you have congestion there, mainly around school, school times, but it's, it's a real problem. So that's the only exit for these houses, for these ninety houses, is to come out on Laguna Shores and go one way or the other way. So it's going to compound and make that an unsafe situation for people trying to get to school and back. The main concern is just the golden opportunity that the city has here with the improvement of Laguna Shores Road. That road, right now, it's not the most picturesque because of the shape of the road and whatnot, but we voted money to improve that road, and that can be, you know, there can be tourists that come here to drive down that road. It's one of the biggest birding roads as well as scenic for the Laguna. It's one of the biggest birding roads as well as scenic for the Laguna that we have here in town.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Yep. My name is, well, thank you, mayor and council members. My name is Maggie Hartung. I live at 2101 Laguna Shores Road. That was my husband. And, you know, we understand there's not been a traffic study, which if there is, it has to be done during ISD season. Because, you know, it's a whole different ballgame while the school's in session and out of session. So if they haven't done one yet, they need to get it done now, first off. Because that's crazy. Who doesn't do a study for that, right? The environmental impact on Redhead Pond is just really intense. It's a, it's a natural environment that's doing very well. It's, it's incredible. And so the owner knew when buying this that it was RE. He knew it. There's no way, I mean, thinking you can buy it and then change it to what he's trying to do is just remarkable. Very disrespectful to the city and to the neighbors and to everybody, I believe. You know, there's only one entrance and one exit. It's going to be on Laguna Shores, right in front of our house. And no traffic study again, just really blows my mind. Laguna Shores, an incredible birding, fishing corridor during the bond project. There were, there were no viewing areas designated for birders or naturalists, no parking along the newest section for fishermen or families to park along the road. And they have no access to the beautiful Laguna Madre, which still, we're a little surprised about that. I can't walk my dog from my house on Laguna Shores without it being one in front of the other because I could die or he could die. So just more traffic would be even more detrimental to anybody that wants to try to be healthy in this city. And please understand the incredible ecosystem that is at its healthiest. I've seen it in thirty years. The Laguna Madre, the Redhead Pond, everything out there because of Packard Channel being open. We are now getting a fresh flush, fresh saltwater flush every day. And it's in the best, if you've been fishing out there, it's, the grasses are healthy. The water's clear. It's beautiful. And let's try to keep that up. So, you know, the grasses are very endangered out there. That's, somebody said something about endangered species, but I know the grasses are very important to the whole ecosystem. So I highly recommend y'all consider the RE that we've been going for all this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Saying no one, are you?
Good afternoon, mayor, council. I'm Juan Peralis Jr. with Jay Peralis Engineering, 4918 Holly Road. We've been providing engineering and technical support to developer and, and trying to come up with solutions for developing the property, excuse me. So I'd just like to maybe add a few points or clarify a few points regarding the development. Initially, we were asked to come up with a multifamily development to go along with RM2 zoning that was originally requested. After getting input from the community and the planning commission and staff, is when we decided to advise the developer to go or to consider the RS6 zoning, which is equivalent to the existing development next door and probably a better compromise as far as actual use and development of the property. It's been vacant there as RE for all these years because it's not cost-effective to develop it at that density. And since that time that the lift station has been constructed and it provides us with an opportunity to develop at a reasonable density and take advantage of the lift station, excuse me, lift station and not have the onsite wastewater disposal. We looked at some traffic counts estimated from the development. By going with the RS6, we reduce our average daily traffic from fifteen hundred that we would expect from the apartments down to about five hundred trips per day from, we came up with about seventy houses, plus or minus, that could be carved out of that piece of property. It's kind of an irregular shape, so it's, you don't get quite the production that you normally do from a nice rectangular piece of property. As far as construction, the new construction would comply with all the city codes as far as water pollution prevention, conformance with the flood zone requirements. We've looked at the new flood zone maps, which the city has adopted for construction. The Velocity Zone, excuse me, comes in off the water and kind of stops at Laguna Shores. Once you get to Laguna Shores and beyond, we're still in a hundred-year floodplain, but it's an A-zone, more of just a static water elevation with minimal wave action. So all of the new construction would have to comply with, with the flood zone and freeboard requirements that the city has recently adopted. We did do a preliminary, as Mrs. Saldana mentioned, we did a preliminary environmental evaluation through U.S. Fish and, excuse me, Fish and Wildlife and their system. Though there are endangered species within the coastal area, no habitats were specifically identified within the property. So if by following codes during construction, following the regulations, we should have a minimal impact to the environment and the community, but still have a improvement which will contribute to tax revenues and the school district.
All right. Thank you very much. No one else? Public hearings close? Recommendation is from RE Residential Estate District to RM2 Multifamily Two District. Is that the recommendation?
The planning commission recommendation was denial of RM2 Multifamily District. As the applicant has made the floor amendment to RS6, staff recommends denial of the RM2 Multifamily Two District and in lieu thereof approval of the RS6 Single Family District.
All right. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. As you've heard, this property has a long history on there. And we've got the area development plan that calls for low density with it. And I think everybody should have been aware of, of the status because it has a vocal history on there. And I understand Mr. Peralis, what he was saying, trying to get the zoning to fit the needs. But, you know, the area development plan carries weight on there. So if, if we have, we've got a piece of property that is developable. It's zoned, RE on there, consistent with the area development plan. And if our decision is based on, okay, we're going to ignore the area development plan because they certainly, it doesn't fit the interest of, of the owner, I think we have it a little backwards. So my preference is we keep it in low density, which there's a long history of. And we've seen that area, the property across the way that the prior council, most of us approved, lightening the zoning, going from commercial to RS15. We did that on the other side directly across the way from this property. So that's definitely where the area is moving. Thanks.
Hey, Ms. Turner?
Okay. I got my cheat sheet up here so I don't get any of these abbreviations mixed up. RS15 is what I was referring to earlier. We did it right down the street. What is wrong with doing that in this location? Have we looked at that? And I thought we did with the planning commission. What did they say about RS15 in this location?
Okay, our, the planning commission did not consider RS15.
They did not consider RS15. Okay. So it's only for the other project they did. Well, since these are so close, RS was at fifteen thousand, the fifteen stands for the fifteen thousand acres within the residential single family. Square feet per acre, sorry. I'm sorry. Per lot.
That's correct. Fifteen thousand square foot.
Looking at.
Minimum lot size.
Insurance things, we just divide by acre. Anyways, that, I guess y'all aren't looking for that because that wouldn't give you enough locations to put the amount of units you want. And y'all don't want that because that would put too many locations, the amount of, or too many units at current location. But it would be a pretty good way to meet in the middle and solve a lot of problems. If we did that, what would happen to the septic tank? They're required to jump onto the city water system if they're RS15, correct? Or no?
It, it basically have to have a half-acre lot to go on septic. So they could go with.
So that'd be twenty-two.
Connecting to sewer under RS15.
I mean, I don't necessarily want to be the hero or the villain here, but I think RS15 is the best medium. I think that it fits the area. And like Councilman Smith said, he knows the area extremely so well. That is kind of the way that things are going. Am I incorrect, Councilman Smith? Sorry if I'm intruding in District Four, but I live pretty close to. I don't see the negatives in that. I know it's probably too late to table, but I would like to hear the council's discussion on RS15. If not, blow me off and let's get to the, the next item.
Mr. Garza?
With all due respect, I mean, it's been ten years, eleven years since we last saw a request to rezone that property. I, my own personal feeling is that if we, they've run the numbers since the multifamily was not, not appealing or acceptable to the existing residents in that area, that they proposed a compromise at RS6 that they felt might be able to give them the numbers and, and work numbers that would allow them to at least, at least come out or make it a viable project. If we do anything less than RS6, you're going to see that property sit there for another number of years, which, I mean, again, it may be, it may be what the school district and what the, and what the residents want in that, in that particular area. But I think from a, from a growth and taxing standpoint, you want any properties that have an opportunity to develop, to develop. The RS6 tied to the lift station would, in my opinion, be more appealing than an RE zoning that it currently has that would allow for septic systems. I had to redo a septic system on Graham Road whenever we did a house in there. And, I mean, that water table, like you said, is awfully close to the surface and it makes it real, real difficult to build in there. And septic systems, even new septic systems, could create more issues for Lola Johnson than, than having a development tied to city sewer. And so I, I think, I mean, you can do what you want. We'll leave it the way it is. But I really think that RS6 gives us the best opportunity to be able to develop that property, seed on the tax rolls, get them to use city services that, that are the largest amount of investments already been made there with the lift station and actually develop in, in, in a way that would not be more intrusive to that, to that particular neighborhood than what might come in future years. Like I've said before, the longer a property sits idle and does not get developed, the higher the density is going to be required in order to be able to make the numbers work in the future. And so, again, I mean, just, just my thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
Along Hustling Hornet, there's, there's a neighborhood back there on Bird Island, Redfish Bay, Baffin Bay Drive. And it shows that there are RS6, or, sorry. Yeah, RS6. Is there an issue why that one's okay, but this one's not? I mean, is it, what is the main, I mean, it seems like it's just on the other side of the pond. You would have some of the same issues.
I'm, I'm not aware of any issues with that particular neighborhood. And staff is supporting the RS6 recommendation.
Okay.
For this property.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Okay. Thank you. To Councilman Garza's point, I think he's, he's correct for the city as a whole. But what we see in Flower Bluff is we see a movement going to these larger lots on there. That's, there, there's many REs out there, R22s, R15s, and high tax base type of lots. So if we were in town on there, I would agree with you. But, but the bluff being the bluff, the bluff is a unique area with it. Say Compton Road, which is not too far from here. We recently went, I believe, with R22. But I, I see a number of subdivisions in the bluff that gravitate towards these larger lots with it. And, and there is a buffer zone to Councilman Hernandez's point on there. But between, that's the Laguna Estate subdivision. The, the school does now have a buffer. So it, we're not backing up to R6 on there and where we saw Laguna Shores go to R15. We went from a higher density and, and that was just two years ago. So as we're looking at the bluff, we need to look at it as the bluff and not as the city as a whole. Thanks.
Mr. Gar, Mr. Garza? All right. Mr. Hernandez, you've done yours. Mr. Roy?
You know, this is interesting because if you do look at the map and you see R, we've got RS6 on the side and we actually have RS6 at the top. And then you look at the number of, I know when you did the public notice and you got twenty-six people that responded, they were responding to a multifamily situation in which they were against, not to an RX, RS6. But on the other hand, in terms of the safety of that road and that adding more density, but you've got RS6 on either side. If you, as far as RS6 goes and making that recommendation, did you take into consideration the additional, the, you know, the, the increased traffic? Or is there, was there a concern there?
Well, we, we don't have traffic counts for Laguna Shores, but certainly, you know, you're looking at adding.
Seventy houses, approximately.
Yeah, seventy, well, if, if, if you go with RS6.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be about seventy to ninety homes.
So if you're like my neighborhood, seventy houses means two-hundred-and-ten cars.
Right.
Because you've got three cars per family sometimes with kids.
So, you know, that's, if, if you said two trips, so that'd be, if you, if you went with ninety single-family homes, you're looking at, at a hundred-and-eighty trips.
Yeah. Okay. That's the only thing I was, I was looking at when you look at the actual aerial view. You can see where you have RS6 on both sides, like Mr. Hernandez, Councilman Hernandez said. All right. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, anybody want to make a motion for it or make an alternate suggestion because it?
I'll, I'll make a motion to deny.
And if you deny it, it stays at this. RE, which is a residential estate district. And you put one to how many per acre? One per acre? And this is part of the master plan? This was done with a master plan in place?
Yeah, the master plan calls for low density, which would be one to three dwellings per acre.
How long have we had that lift station out there?
We've had it there for some time. I don't have the specific date on that, but it.
And I, I don't. I'm, I think, lift station, what'd that cost us? A half-a-million dollar?
Typically, they'll cost a half-million to a million would be a typical cost.
Do we have anybody using that?
At this point, no.
That was a wise investment. And we're gonna, we're gonna continue not to allow development out there while our half-a-million-dollar lift station just sits there? Has it got the pumps in it or has it just got the pipes? Is there anything in there?
It has both. It has both? Is that correct?
It was functional.
Well, I need, I mean, I don't need fourteen heads bobbing. I needed.
It was originally functional. We, we've removed the pumps so that they wouldn't decay. But if, if it goes into use, we would put pumps back in.
We've got a half-a-million-dollar lift station here and we can't get across the Oso. Can we move pump station or lift station? Can't do that, I guess, huh? We got the pumps, right? Huh? Well, I don't know what happened, but if I were them, I'd be looking for my money back if I made a donation and nobody used it. But I don't know who that was. But, so we're going to continue to make sure that nothing happens on that so the school kids can use it. The school doesn't want to buy the property from the individual? Well, I mean, I've got a real problem here. We've got a master plan that is put together by the community and voted on and adopted. And they're willing to go based on what the master plan is calling for. Is that correct? RS-6, I think, is what you called. I don't know what that means, but I've heard it several times.
No, RS-6 would be inconsistent with the master plan.
What does the master plan call for?
The master plan calls for low-density residential, which would be either RE, R-22, RS-22, or RS-15.
That gets, what's the R-22, two people?
Two dwellings per acre, yes, sir.
So why is it 22?
It's minimum lot size of 22,000 square feet.
So anybody walking down the street would know that that 22 meant you've got 22,000 square feet and can build two houses? I don't know. Somebody, it sounds to me like we're trying to, we are discouraging somebody to be able to develop their private property just to want, keep fewer kids from coming to school and protect the private access to a beach that these folks are enjoying but not paying for when it meets the criteria for many of our residential developments. We've got a half a million dollar lift station out there that nobody's using, which is just unconceivable. I don't know the solution. You've sure brought attention to a big problem, though. So what are they going to do? All right, the motion dies lack of a second. So the motion to deny doesn't apply. Anybody got any suggestion? Item number 27 is dead. No motion. It failed for lack of a motion and no action taken.
Mayor, we have to take action either to deny or approve based on what state law says, don't we? So it's rejected anyway. We don't take any action, right?
No action, it dies.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to table for the.
Well, the motion failed and I've declared it dead. So I don't know what we do now. What do they, they come back with a different deal or what do they do?
Thank, go ahead, go ahead and pass.
We'll get with the property owner and tell them what their options are. All right, the next item, we close the public hearing then on 27.
Mayor. Point of order, I mean, I think there should be a vote taken. I think that's just whether it fails or it passes the approval, I think we should just vote if, you made a motion, right? There's no second? That's just to leave it the way it was, right? Okay, and there's no.
And there wasn't, that motion failed and there wasn't another motion.
After six months, it automatically dies.
So if there's a motion, make it. I mean, we've got things, nobody wants to make a motion to put in multifamily. Nobody wants to go small. They want to keep, they want to keep it open. They don't want anybody there. They want to access it. We've got a half a million dollar lift station over there. Nobody wants to make it work or nobody wants to develop it to the point where we've got to use it.
Mayor, can I? I'll tell you what, is it too late for me to second Greg's motion? That way we can get a vote?
Me personally, I don't know. You're the parliamentarian over there, Mr. Roy.
Is it still alive? Is the motion, if the motion is still alive, you can make a second. So you can rule on that, Mayor, whether or not the motion is still alive and subject to a second.
I mean, I'll second his motion if you're willing to take it.
Do you want your motion to be out there or not? All right, well, let's get it done, one way or the other. Your motion's on the floor and your motion is to? To deny.
And I'll second it. I'll second the deny.
So we're going to have a motion and a second. We're going to vote on something that I've already done, but that's okay.
And the point of order, point of order is this or deny the RS-6 or the multifamily?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
So just to be clear, this takes a simple majority? Because we're denying, but we're not.
To approve, it requires three-quarter.
Denial kills it on a simple majority. However, it dies unless it's approved by a three-quarter votes.
Okay, so a simple majority then.
All right, the motion to deny and what's the call roll?
Mayor McComb.
I'll pass. Let these guys work it out. I tell you, you know.
So an a would be to deny.
That's correct.
All right, I both know.
Okay, so you're, just to make clear, you're voting no, which means you don't want to deny.
I think we ought to get them something to do.
All right. Councilmember Roy?
No.
Smith? Barrera?
Aye.
Garza?
No.
Juahardo? To deny. And if you vote aye, it's to deny.
Deny the apartment?
No, to deny the multifamily.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes.
Aye. Hernandez?
No.
No. For Hunter.
Hunter. Molina?
No.
Okay, so the motion to deny fails.
So the item's still open for discussion.
Okay, I move to approve the RS-6 zoning. Deny the multifamily, but approve the RS-6.
I second.
All right, there's a motion to deny the multifamily and that's the RE or the RM2. Oh, you want to deny that one?
Deny the multifamily, but approving the RS-6 compromise.
And as I understand, it takes a three-quarter vote?
That's correct.
And explain again now for the public and for me what the RS-6 is?
It's a single-family residential, 6,000-square-foot lots. You're looking at 75 to 80 lots in that section right there on those 12 acres.
So that's two or three houses to an acre.
Actually, almost five, about five houses per.
And that means no septic. Basically, they use the lift.
All right. Get your, all right. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor McComb?
Aye.
Councilmembers Roy?
Aye.
Smith? Barrera?
No.
Garza?
Aye.
Juahardo? Hernandez?
Aye.
Hunter?
Aye.
Molina?
No.
The motion fails.
All right. Item 27 is dead and we can bring it back in six months. Item number 28, public hearing on ordinance rezoning property located at or near 10,002 24 Leopard Street.
This rezoning request is from a single-family residential district to a general commercial district. The purpose is to allow for parking and storage of trailers, boats, and recreational vehicles as part of an existing mini-storage building. The applicant is Corpus Christi Storage Solutions, represented by Mitch Rhodes. The property is located on the north side of Leopard Street, east of McKenzie Road and west of Irma Drive. The property does not have direct street frontage. However, Associated Mini-Storage Business has approximately 300 feet of street frontage along Leopard Street, which is designated as an A2 secondary arterial street. To the north is a property-zoned RS-6 single-family district, which is a public park. It's Patterson Park. To the south is a commercial business, ZONE CG2, general commercial district, and consists of Associated Mini-Storage Business that has been in operation since 1974. To the east are single-family residences, ZONE RS-6, single-family 6 district. And to the west are commercial properties, ZONE CG2, general commercial district, consisting of an ice company, offices for Dow Chemical, and an air-conditioned repair company. The intended use is to allow for the parking and storage of trailers, boats, and recreational vehicles. This is part of an existing mini-storage business. The property is .438 acres in size and is unplatted. The applicant is requesting the CG2 general commercial district. The subject property is currently ZONE RS-6, single-family district. It consists of a lot that's been used as storage for boats and recreational vehicles and has remained such since the Associated Mini-Storage Business opened in 1974. The proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, which designates the land use as open space. The proposed use does not have a negative impact on the adjacent properties if conditions related to hours of operation, lighting, noise, and buffers were implemented. The CG2 district opens the possibility of more intense commercial uses, such as bars, nightclubs, adjacent to residential areas. Also, the prevailing pattern of CG2 is only one lot deep off of Leopard Street. A small vehicle storage lot is a low-impact commercial use and limited hours of operation of 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. would reduce any chance of potential negative impacts from occurring. The Associated Mini-Storage Business was in operation since 1974 and has been recently purchased by the current owner to continue the business. And the owner is requesting the appropriate zoning for this site. Planning Commission met on April 17th and the unanimous recommendation is denial of the change of zoning from RS-6, single-family 6 district, to CG2, general commercial district, and in lieu thereof, approval of the RS-6 special permit, single-family 6 district, with conditions. Fifteen public notices were mailed, zero received in favor and zero in opposition. The applicant is in agreement with the special permit. I stand by for questions.
All right, we'll open public comment period. Is the applicant here? Applicant here? Anybody want to make a comment for, in favor of or opposed to the staff recommendation is? RS-6 SP?
That is correct.
Is that to put single-family people in a storage unit or what?
Okay, so the current.
Only if they're dead.
Well.
So to address that, the current base zoning is RS-6. And so the base zone would remain, but the special permit would allow the use of the storage of boats and vehicles.
All right, and to prove my point, the only one that signed in favor of the zoning application was Teloso Midway ISD. They like that commercial property. They don't like that residential property. Okay.
Storage preferred.
Yeah, no kids.
Move to accept staff's recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the single-family 6 special permit that says you can store them, but you can't feed them.
May we close the public hearing, please?
You may. Public hearing's closed. Is there a motion for, there is a motion for approval of the staff recommendation, is that correct?
Correct.
And there's a second?
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. Item 29, public hearing, first reading and rezoning for property located at or near 701 McBride Lane, Vernon and Jennifer Carr.
This rezoning request is from a general commercial district and a single-family district to a light industrial district. The purpose is to allow for the construction of a welding shop. The applicants are Vernon and Jennifer Carr, represented by Wade Spence. The property is located on the west side of McBride Lane, south of Hampshire Road and north of Leopard Street. The property fronts upon McBride Lane, which is designated as a C1 minor collector street and along Hampshire Road, which is a local residential street. And to the north are property-zoned CG2, general commercial district, and RS-6, single-family 6 district, and consist of a vacant lot and single-family residences. To the south is a church, ZONE CG2, general commercial district, and RS-6, single-family district. To the east, across McBride Lane, are various light industrial businesses that are ZONE IL, light industrial district. And to the west are single-family residences, ZONE RS-6, single-family district. The intended use is to allow for the construction of a welding shop. The property is .909 acres in size and is unplatted. And the applicant is requesting light industrial district. The subject property is currently ZONE CG2 and RS-6. It consists of vacant land and has remained undeveloped since annexation in 1954. The proposed rezoning to IL, light industrial district is generally consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, which calls for light industrial land use. However, McBride Lane is the dividing line between the current industrial uses and the commercial and residential uses. The proposed rezoning is incompatible with adjacent properties, which are ZONE CG2 and RS-6. However, the proposed use does not have a negative impact upon the surrounding neighborhood if conditions such as hours of operation, lighting, noise, and indoor operations were implemented. An increase in the zoning district intensity next to a single-family neighborhood will potentially subject additional residential homes to hazards such as noise, smoke, vibration, dust, and odors. A small welding shop is a low-impact commercial use and the limited hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. would reduce the chance of any potential negative impacts from occurring. Planning Commission met on April 17th and the unanimous recommendation is denial of the change in zoning from CG2, general commercial district, to the IL, industrial district, light industrial district, and in lieu thereof, approval of the CG2 special permit with conditions. Nineteen public notices were mailed, zero received in favor and zero in opposition. The applicant is in agreement with the special permit conditions and I stand by for any questions.
The applicant here? I don't have any questions. You, you going to support what they're recommending?
Yes.
All right. Anybody else have anything in favor of or in opposition to? If not, we'll close the public hearing. If you approve, going to be the first time property's been zoned since it was born back in 1940 something or '50 when it moved into the city, right?
Yes, sir.
Lot of interest in that area, I guess, to build up a residential or something.
Just to clarify, you're moving to approve staff's recommendation or to industrial zoning? Okay, I'll second it, yeah.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation. And that's, if I'm reading this right, to?
CG2 with a special permit?
Commercial district with a special permit, special permit SP with conditions.
Yes, sir.
Any further comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is it just me or is there something wrong with our process that our code is either so narrow or so confusing that I think every zoning case we had today was a special permit? Nobody can just come in and say, I want to do something here and go have a cup of coffee and say that's where we're going to put it. They got to beg for a special permit because it doesn't meet any criteria. Something's wrong with the code that you've got to have a special permit every time you turn around.
Right, and we've had these cases with car washes, for example. Also with auto service related to automobile dealerships. And so some of those functions, for example, with the auto sales, that's, that requires light industrial. So we've had to come in with a special permit for that. Staff is working on some UDC amendments to address. Staff is working on some UDC amendments to address some of these issues.
Speaking of that, where are we in this $25,000 or $30,000 study we're going to have? I thought we were going to have something that came back, and it's, it's June almost, and we've got nothing.
It's here for, it will be presented to City Council on the 11th of June. It's scheduled for presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the UDC evaluation report.
Okay, it passed, I think, so, all right.
Yeah.
We voted, it passed, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we're at regular agenda items 30 to 34. Surely nobody's going to oppose applying for a grant, but we might.
Well, we do need an amendment on the floor with just some, some verbiage, so I appreciate you getting through it.
You've been sitting here all day to apply for a grant?
I have.
Huh?
Well, we have, I have another item with you, so.
We got to figure out something better than this. Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Mike Markle, Police Department. Item 30 is a resolution authorizing an application for $418,087 from the Burglary and Theft Prevention Authority of Texas. This is a grant that goes back to '91, requires a cash match of $702,757, in-kind match of $62,000, and a program match, income match of $3,851. I stand by for any questions. I do, we do need to make a amendment on the floor, though.
What's, what's the motion you need to make?
I think Paul has it. Do you want to read it?
So, the additional language that is to be added to the resolution is Section 2, "In the event of a loss or misuse of these grant funds, the City of Corpus Christi assures that the grant funds will be returned in full to the Automobile Burglary Theft Prevention Authority."
Just a disclaimer, legal had a conversation earlier today, as a matter of fact, to add this language, so.
I'll make a motion to amend, "In the event of a loss or misuse," that the monies will be applied back.
I second.
Third. Or the chief goes to jail.
Yeah.
Okay.
The county.
Hey, you're careful, that's public record.
Okay. All right, there's a motion to amend, is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Who to approve is amended?
Thank you.
There's a motion to approve is amended on the grant application.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, number 30 passed. Number 31, resolution for service agreement for custodial services for outlying police buildings.
Mayor and Council, Pat Eldridge, Police Department. This is a resolution authorizing a 12-month service agreement for custodial services for outlying police buildings with Unified Service Associates of San Antonio for an amount not to exceed $109,395.96, with two 12-month options for a potential total amount not to exceed $328,187.88. This will be performed at 10 outlying police buildings, it is not the police headquarters, it's all our outlying buildings. The service will provide an adequate number of custodians that will work Monday through Sunday to perform the services required. Contracts and procurement conducted a competitive request for bid process to obtain bids from qualified firms. The city received four responsive, responsible bids and one non-responsible bid. Staff recommends award to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, Unified Service Associates. Stand by for any questions.
Mr. Garza. Mr. Molina.
Is this the agenda item that the vendor was alluding to during public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Miles, I know that you had walked off with him, or he started talking to you after public comment, what became of that conversation?
I got his phone number and had to have my attorney call, give him a call, so we haven't, we haven't followed up yet because we've been having the meeting.
Okay, is that something that needs to be addressed before we approve this?
I believe that Mr. Rodriguez had spoken to him.
Yeah, I don't know what all those details were.
I, I did speak to Mr. Ortega, however, I mean, it's still ongoing, I still need to discuss with staff, the, the staff's side of it. I spoke to Mr. Ortega regarding his concerns about the termination of his contract.
So does this item need to be tabled until those concerns are addressed?
No, sir, I'm sorry, Mike Markle, Police Department. It's, it's a one-reading item because the contract expires here shortly. We do need to award the contract so we have continued service in our buildings. We're happy to sit with this individual. I, I do want to clarify, we have notified him many, many times about deficiency in performance. This is not unknown to him, but we're, we're happy to go back and talk about process again, but this contract, we, we need to move forward on.
Got it, thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Smith.
Excuse me, what we heard earlier today was about a lease of a certain piece of property. What we're approving here is custodial services?
Correct.
So a little bit of an apples and oranges? Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, I wasn't sure, where'd you hear that it was a lease of property?
Yeah, I think we might, he was talking about custodial service, he was talking about this contracting, contract.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
My question is, you're saying the effective date of this contract would be at the end of the normal expiration of the existing contract? Because what he was alleging was it was wrongful termination of a contract.
It's, it's...
Failure to follow procedure in the way it was canceled.
There's some, there's some semantics here, it's not, we didn't discontinue him mid-contract. We had a contract with, with renewable options, we're just choosing not to go with the option to renew, based on performance. So we're, we're going to his end of contract term.
Okay, well, I mean...
Just for clarification.
I don't mind going by the letter of the law, but I, I don't want to put us in a position that's going to get us in some kind of legal problem. He's got a legitimate claim, but if you're, if you feel comfortable, as long as this, the normal course of his existing contract is going to run, and then, then you argue later whether that procedure was proper or something.
It's one of the things that happens when you have option contracts, the contractor often perceives that they have the right to those options, and it's really written that the city has the sole discretion to offer that option or not.
Okay, there's a motion, second, on item number 31, any more questions, any more comments?
There's, there's no motion or second, I don't think.
I thought somebody made a motion, second.
Move to approve.
Second, a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, 32, 33, 34 has been dealt with. We don't have any briefings, do we?
No. No.
Legislative updates, we have any legislative updates? Other than there's, I guess...
Senate Bill 29.
Huh?
Yeah. 29 failed.
All right, we don't, oh, we need executive session for 35, and that's it?
Correct.
All right, then, let me get my...
Page, page 11.
Well, I got to find the document there. Y'all put out way too much paper on agenda days here. Page 11. Okay, the, the council will now go into executive session on item 35 for the Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071. It's just item 36, 35, right?
Correct, just item 35.
And we shall return when we return.
and strategy is for enhancing service, we've switched, not, we haven't switched, that our consultant, Trillian Aviation, has been bought out, and we have the annual airport convention jumpstart next, next week, so, or, or next month. At some point in time, I'd like to get a presentation where our, what our strategy is moving forward for increasing our service.
Okay, real quick, we did get a report on the MPO in the corridor, but I'd also like to see some information on the extension to Rod Field and trying to move that up as a priority for the MPO.
Mayor, would you turn your microphone on, please?
All the MPO's doing right now, and I sit on that, is that they're planning, and they're going to be planning for the next four or five years, they have no money. All our money's committed to the Harbor Bridge, so, and it's two years behind, I think, or one year behind now, I think the latest I've heard may be longer than that.
Yeah, it's just to, to get them ball rolling with the environmental studies.
But, I mean, I, I don't know if they've got any money to spend on anything, but they can sure get it into plan, but it, it wouldn't hurt to bring it up, find out where we are on the thing, but, and they need to get clarification, because there's, I think, and you heard it here today, I don't think it's intentional, but I think there's a lot of misinformation about what that property can and can't be used for, because we've got some specific identificating, identifications in that land that we got from the General Land Office that allow uses. Condos and townhomes are not one of them, but roads and facilities and restrooms and that sort of thing are all there to provide amenities, so when people come out to walk around in nature, they can enjoy it. So anyway, anything else? If I hear nothing else, Mr. Zanoni, we hope we haven't discouraged you here on your first day as the new city manager, and we, and I think the public has, has high expectations, and I think this council, if you haven't sensed it, I think is here to try to provide you with whatever equipment you need for your team and effort, and we want to be as supportive as we can to move some things forward. Mr. Selman, again, thank you for your stepping up for that year-plus, and you did your own work, and we appreciate it very much. So with that, we'll stand adjourned, see you June 11th. Right?